Good morning, everyone. I just said that you can keep it down and secure. Getting that job is pretty hard.
Okay. Did you hear an alarm any faster or through the phone?
I heard it from pleasure.
Okay. All right. Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, August 21st, 2018. It's a little after nine. Welcome, everyone, that's here today for whatever reason. We're just happy to see the public here and appreciate you taking the time to be with us here today. I hereby call this meeting to order. For political.
Chairman McFerrin.
Present.
Vice Chair Gago.
President.
Commissioner O'Connell.
President.
Commissioner Blackenham.
President.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present. Okay, we got a forum. And Peter, why don't you please stand Commissioner O'Donnell, who, before we start the meeting, I would like to recognize yesterday was her birthday. She's not admitting as to what, but how many years, but she had a good time and everything. If we can start before we go to the inspirational devotion by singing "Happy Birthday" to you.
Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday, Mr. Earl.
Yes, script is in.
Happy Birthday to you.
At this time, she will introduce Pastor Anita Lucero for the inspirational devotion.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the song. Today, I'd like to welcome Pastor Anita Lucero from the Chamosal Lighthouse, who will come and give us some words of inspiration and prayer. Thank you for making me down the mountain to be here.
Thank you again for inviting us morning. I'm going to start this morning with a reading from Psalms 121. It says, "I looked up my eyes to the hills; where does my help come from? My help comes from the Lord, the maker of heaven and earth. He will not let your foot slip; he who watches over you will neither slumber; indeed, he who watches over Israel will neither slumber nor sleep. The Lord watches over you; the Lord is your shade at your right hand; the sun will not harm you by day nor the moon by night. The Lord will keep you from all harm; he will watch over your life; the Lord will watch over your coming and your going, now and forevermore." Let us bow in reverence toward our Lord Jesus Christ. Father God, Creator of heaven and earth, and giver and sustainer of life, we invite your Holy Spirit here this morning to meet this meeting, Lord. We come before your throne in the name of Jesus, our Savior, giving him thanks and honor and glory on behalf of all who have gathered here together this morning, Lord. We thank you, Father, for the freedom in this assembly to meet together and to discuss the needs of Taos County, Lord. We thank you for freedom to open with prayer. We ask that you preserve this right until your coming, Lord. In the Scriptures, Lord, Saint Paul wrote that you have said that all citizens are not to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. And Saint James wrote that if anyone desires wisdom, let him ask of God, and he will give it. We humbly ask you, Father, for wisdom and the spirit of unity and cooperation in dealing with the needs and challenges of Taos County. Therefore, Lord God, I pray for the Board of Commissioners, for the city officials, and for this assembled council. Father, I ask that you would grant them wisdom to govern all the conflicting interests and issues before them, Lord God, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, the ability to work together, Lord God, in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement. And Father, I ask you that you grant them personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. I pray for the agenda, Lord, set before them this day. Please give them an assurance of what would please you, Lord, and what would benefit those who live and work in and around this Taos County, Lord God. And Lord, remind us what your word says in Psalms 127: "Unless the Lord builds the house, its builders labor in vain; and unless the Lord watches over the city, the watchmen stand guard in vain." We pray all this, Lord God, in your holy, precious name, Jesus Christ. Thank you again, Father. Amen.
Thank you very much. Please remain standing and bear with me, Chairman.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you have a Beatles song. We still have that. That'll be in the program. Sixty-four.
All right. I didn't know it was trivia day, but you guys need to really be on your toes and put me another reference coming out. Next item on the agenda, Commissioners, is approval of the agenda. Move for approval, Mr. Chairman, on this staff as chairman of Commissioners. Second. Motion, second, to approve the agenda as presented. Clerk Calhoun.
Commissioner O'Connell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenham.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Chairman McFerrin.
Yes. Item six, under reports and recognition, this will be a proclamation announcing Senior Citizens Day, which will be presented at the 2018 County Fair, which is this weekend. This will be read and presented by Vice Chair Gago on Monica, what time, Saturday at?
At, I believe it's going to be at 12:00.
Saturday at noon, Mark. Okay, all right. I'll read the proclamation that will be presented by Vice Chair Gago on that day. Whereas throughout the history, older people have achieved much for our families, our community, and our country. This remains true today and gives us ample reasons this year to reserve a special day in honor of the senior citizens who mean so much to our community. And whereas for all they have achieved throughout life and for all they continue to accomplish, we, our older citizens of Taos County, our thanks and heartfelt salute. And whereas all persons reaching their latter years should have opportunity to fully share the benefits of our advances in economic wealth, science, technology, and culture. And whereas we in our community acknowledge and deserve recognition for what they have given and continue to give our community. And whereas after a lifetime of contributions, our seniors have earned our care and respect and the opportunity to continue to contribute to the fabric of our county that they helped shape. And whereas our elders forged a bright future for all our children, and they deserve the best we have to offer. We support those whose life's work has made ours a little easier. And therefore, on this 21st day of August, 2018, we, the Taos County Board of Commissioners, by authority vested in us by the people of Taos County, hereby recognize August 25th, 2018, as Senior Citizens Day in Taos County. So this will be presented at that ceremony on Saturday, and we truly appreciate what our seniors do for us each and every day. We're proud to announce that hopefully in about a year, we'll have the senior center right back here, as you see the construction is going on. So it's ended on Saturday. Mr. Chairman, would you like a motion to approve? Absolutely. So move, Mr. Chairman. Second. Okay, a motion, second, to approve. The proclamation is read into the record and will be presented on Saturday. Clerk Calhoun.
Commissioner O'Connell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenham.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Chairman McFerrin.
Yes. Item seven, a citizen concerned. We invite anyone from the public that wishes to address the commission at this time on any subject. We cannot take action on this, but we can direct staff to follow up on it if need be. Or if they just want to come and talk to us about something, we invite you to come forward now and keep your comments to less than five minutes, please. Anyone wishing to address? Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you all again for acknowledging our seniors. This is, I think, our third, fourth year that Billy Archibald has organized our Senior Citizens Day at the Taos County Fair. And I would just like to add this time, invite everybody to the Taos County Fair. It is the fair for people, the residents of Taos County and, God willing, we will have fruits, vegetables, flowers. Of course, I have lots of livestock on the Junior Livestock Show, but I will be leaving some books in love here of our program, and the inside cover is our schedule of events. It is open to the general public on Friday afternoon for rabbit and poultry judging. The general public is more than welcome on Saturday and Sunday. That's when our big days are. And that's with the Junior Livestock Show, auction in the afternoon, pie and wide mountain contest, pep parade on Sunday. But this year, our fair was dedicated to three citizens of Taos County that we lost. Jennifer Ortega from Questa, she was a nurse with the ER department at Fort Worth Hospital, also a mother of some four H kids that are in our program. Dorothy Zoff, who is a very big part of the quilting industry and art industry here in Taos County, along with Joella Nowicki. These two ladies used to run our quilting department at the county fair and have brought it to where it is now, the patentry of our indoor exhibits. So please come to the Taos County Fair and I'll support our four H kids in the auction because we have about 22 votes to sell, so come out, I think about. I think there's still 17 poultry that have been exited the auction, so come out and support the county and the Lord. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll call you real quick. When is the livestock auction?
The livestock auction will be Saturday at 2:00 p.m. in the indoor arena. Yes. So if anybody is interested, we also do, if you're not able to purchase an animal, what we do is add-ons. If you know one of the children, or you want to do one, Taos County Sheriff's possibly one of them, they do a general add-on to all the kids. They'll do a donation of $25 to each child that shows in the livestock show. Males meat processing out of Colorado, he's one of our processors that comes down and supports the kids. He does a donation also, gets just straight across the board to the children, or if you know somebody individually, you can also do that. Also, if you know somebody that's willing to go and haffers on one, on one of the animals to be processed, putting it through, that is also something that we can operate.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thanks for everything, Ethan.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Who'll come forward and state your names for the record?
I'm Sinus Lucas, I'm the executive director, it's Trey Hartz. I just came to announce that we're having a vaccination clinic for Taos County residents on September 1st from 11:00 to 2:00 at the shelter. All vaccinations will be $10 in our microchipping tree. We had it up to $20 because we got a new kind of microchips. It's a little smaller, so it's better for smaller animals, less flotation, less issues. So that's the reason for the cost increase. I just wanted to notify you to let you know so we can let everybody in the county know that it's time.
Any spay neuter clinics coming up in the future?
The sheriff's department is going to be at right now. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the commission? Seeing none, we will move on with our agenda. We thank you all again for being here and for the comments that you shared with us. Item eight, Commissioners, under minutes, is the approval of the August 7th, 2018 regular meeting minutes. Motion to approve? Also, Mr. Chairman. Motion, second, to approve the August 7th, 2018 regular meeting minutes. Clerk Calhoun.
Commissioner O'Connell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenham.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
Excuse me.
Chairman McFerrin.
Yes.
He's muted.
Okay, he's muted. Thank you. Well, thank you, Tammy, for your preparation of the minutes. We appreciate it. Item nine, of the presentations, A is a presentation on the National Education Gross Receipts Tax Improvement Revenue Bond Series 2018. Chris Beerhead from Montreal Spurling is here to give a report on how this went.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the commission. Chris Beerhead, the bottom form of bond council of the county on this transaction. Just here to give a quick overview, obviously, you're familiar with, June 12th, you adopt the bond ordinance approving the education gross receipts tax bonds to the benefit of the school districts in Taos County. That delegated authority for the county staff and professionals to go to the finance authority, finalize the transaction, set the pricing, set the terms, which has happened and it has closed, very successful. Terms and the sales certificate in front of you is what summarizes the pricing and the final terms of the bonds that the county manager was part of assigned before we closed. But to hit the high points, so the finance authority was the lender, it was, they have maturities 2019 through 2023, when the current tax is set to expire. The interest rate, as you can see on page two, for each of the maturities comes in at less than 2.5% for the term of bond, so very successful pricing. The reason that the document made it a little bit longer is most of the back is the same exhibit that was put on board, which relates to the debt service reserve policy, which saves money in this case by you don't have to fund a reserve with cash, you can fund it with this policy and one-time insurance premium. The attachment is virtually the same as on the bond orders. The insurance company just made a couple of revisions to put the policy number in there, so just to make sure that we had it as up to date as possible, we reattached it to the sales certificate. The down to the good news in terms of the proceeds, the bond issue generated $7,620,575 for the school districts and U N M Taos in the county. That was broken out with Taos schools getting $4,427,241.63 distributed between Taos schools and the six charters that operate within the Taos School District. The U N M branch is, I understand, it's 25% of the proceeds. That breaks out to $1,905,437.75. Questa schools get $696,192.87. They also have two charter schools within their district that get an allocation based on student population, and that's how that's determined for Taos schools and Questa schools. Penyasco schools no longer have any charter schools, and their distribution was $591,996.75. In short, the pricing filled within parameters that you approved on June 12th, it did, and this is in order to comply with the requirements of the 2013 bonds and insurance on that, this could reduce the maximum amount of proceeds for the school districts with the ability to sponge up a short-term bond at the end of the bond issuance, for whatever might be cumulative of that. Happy to answer any questions. Overall, I think it went very well, and finance authority was the excellent option for the county, providing very good interest rates. Commissioner O'Connell.
Mr. Chairman, I'm impressed, thank you for being here. Last meeting that I was asking about the immense existence of schools in Oklahoma County, and I was wondering what the situation, how that was.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Connell. Did look at that statute sets forth that every school district within the county that does not have, can have no more than 10% of its town population residing outside the county falls within the permitted recipients. So in this case, basically, this is more than 10% of the student population resides either in Rio Riva County or some other county besides Taos County, and therefore, they are outside of the statutory parameters. So that's the reason, and I speculate that that is the case in what we had in Manchester.
Nonetheless, we have the local, they're a resort there and they're a major contributor in terms of GRT. Just wondering, what would be the process of changing that?
So next question, Commissioner O'Connell. Since it's a state statute, what you would do is move back and you would look to have that amended to broaden the scope of who is a recipient of the gross receipts tax revenues. Currently, this is not a global auction tax, the county sets it to state level, so it would be a state legislative matter, going through the regular lobbying process, either from people associated with those schools that want to be included, or the county wants to do that, it can do it as well. But it would be in the next legislative session, 2019, you can start with committees before then, obviously, there are other steps. But that would be the appropriate steps to get this done.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Having any signs?
Everything's signed, sealed, done. The schools all know that the money is there, and they understand that these have to go for capital improvements, and they've provided lists of those capital improvements, and I think that they're thrilled, obviously, to be recipients of this. And we very much appreciate the opportunity to be of service to the county again, and happy going forward, I want to stress this to all my clients, we are here to be of service going forward. If there's an issue that comes up, just call us because our opinion goes forward with this transaction, and we'd like to know if something is off the rails, which we can help put it back on the rails or take remedial steps with this. So our relationship is ongoing, please don't hesitate to call us, not end with this issues.
Commissioner Blackenham.
Hey, Chairman, it's a great rate, 2.5, much better than the original proposals that were being floated, and so I just wanted to thank you for your careful work and thanks staff for following through. With that, it ends up being more money for the schools, so it really was a good move.
Thank you, sir. And this is, I completely agree, finance authority is absolutely approached, that is the right way to go.
You sometimes ask the right question during the time.
Yes.
Well, thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. We'll be in touch.
Have a good day.
Item eight, a presentation and an update from the Taos Education Career Center at U N M. This will be presented by the director, Judy Hofer, and the program specialist, Nina Gonzalez.
Good morning. Our students are here representing us as well, so I just ask them to stay here for the virtual support, but we're really grateful to have them with us today, so thank you so much. I also want to make note of our members who are here.
Thank you all for the time you've spent on this.
Yes, thank you. Taos Education and Career Center, we're here today because the county has been investing in us for three years now and believes in what we do, and we want to give you an overview of what we've achieved with your support, and we also want to end with talking about our vision for the future and asking for additional support. So I'd like to start with a quote. This was 170 years ago, and we are still at it, but our purpose is really, in my mind, captured by this quote, which is, "Education then beyond all other devices of human origin is the great equalizer of the conditions of men, the balance wheel of the social machinery." So in other words, education is the bomb. Education is what we need to do to really make a difference in our community. So why do we exist? Well, we exist for that lofty purpose, but we exist because education is an anti-poverty measure, and we're a career and workforce development force. It helps with behavioral health, physical health, drug and alcohol recovery, all kinds of safety, from suicide prevention to physical safety to violence in our community and community safety. It helps with positive parenting. It helps with college success. And it really reduces the income gap, which is, our county is facing, how do we develop? We know that we're going to develop. We know we're going to change. How do we do that in ways that make sure that those who have been here for generations and those who are in poverty really get a fight up? So that's about who we are. So who do we serve? There's, you know, adult education is not understood. You know, we understand kindergarten, K-12, college, but what in the world is adult ed? Who do we serve? So we can serve anyone who's 16 years of age but who's no longer in school, and we serve people up to... How old was our oldest graduate, 16? 68 was our oldest graduate last year. And when people get a high school diploma, we can still serve them. So our goal is to make sure that people are college-ready and they're equipped to succeed, and many people with a high school diploma still lack reading and writing math skills at a college level. I would say most, probably close to 70%. So we can serve all those people for free and get them ready so they're not taking all their tuition dollars. And we serve, so we're serving workers who want to upskill. We serve immigrants in our community, we're the sole immigrant support provider for parents, for adults, north of Santa Fe, and we do a lot of ESL classes. And I think we said others, but we can serve just about everyone in our county. And I want to say and really congratulate the students that are here, is people have stereotypes of who goes to adult education, and when you hear the stories, and we'll wrap up that way, it really is to challenge that notion of who are those, it's really for those who traditional education did not work.
Good morning, thank you for having us. Again, my name is Megan Boss, and I'm the program specialist, and I just want to talk about really the innovative models of how we serve those who are home traditional school didn't work. In our experience, they're often the brightest, and for whatever reason, have just had challenges or obstacles come up that the regular pathway isn't there. This is a national model, so in the last four years, when the federal government really looked at how do we create the most innovative state-of-the-art education models for adult education, it's called integrated education and training, and this is what we launched three years ago when the county first started supporting us. And it's the idea that at the same time, you're boosting your academic skills, that you're also really looking at career technical training and career exploration and career research, so you're doing both at the same time. And most importantly, that you're working on your professionalism and life skills at the same time. So when we talk about what that means is that people can resolve conflict, that people can communicate effectively, that people can solve problems, that people, it's not just about showing up to work on time, but what are the circumstances of your life that need to be in place so you can show up to work on time? So that's really the core of our curriculum, and then along with that, we're helping people get into career tracks. So we have a renewable energy or solar tech track already, we have an E M P, we have a certified nursing program, we have a community health worker program, and our goal is to expand this to every career certificate in our community, so that you're getting this simultaneous instruction and that you're learning. We know that to really, the low-level or entry-level workers and learners, they need to learn academics in a career context. They need to know why they're learning math. They need to learn reading and writing in a way that makes sense to them and that they can apply to their careers. We know nationally, this is a much more effective way than just having a plain old math class. An exciting announcement is that we applied for, there was a national call for innovative education, integrated education and training, or I E T models. Tech brought the model called HI, which stands for Hub of Internet-Based Vocation and Education. And the idea is that one of the ways that we can really work on economic vitality and job creation in our community is by online locations. So coding, medical coding, health I T, Airbnb, consulting, all kinds of stuff. This is a shared office space with wraparound supports, and you get your credentials in-house. This model just won, was selected one of 10 programs in the nation by the Minds That Move Us initiative. Most of the other programs, it was like Philadelphia, LA, DC, Boston, Taos. So we now have three years coming of national-level expertise and the opportunity to access national-level funding. They really looked at HI, even when we went to the conferences, some of the most innovative stuff out there. So we're really looking to expand this model of I E T curriculum.
Okay, so what we, you know, as educators, we tend to talk a lot, even though we're not supposed to. I just want you to know what you made an investment in us. This is the return, this is what you're getting. So we're consistently the number one or number two adulting program in the state, as based on performance and innovation. What that translates to is at least a third of all those receiving a high school diploma each year come from our program. So if you're saying we need to make sure people graduate, a third is coming from our programs. It's hard for me to read this. Okay, we have Okay, we have 50, 50 students since 2015, since you started investing in us and we've received other grant funding. We've been developing these I E T models since then to date. We've had 50 adult ed students who have completed courses in that model Nina just described in the areas of C N A, E M T, community health worker, and renewable energy. So, and with that broader set of skills, it's not just about getting a job, it's about excelling in a career that you're, you have passion about. So we've had 50 students. We, just this past year, we worked with 42 immigrant students and to improve English skills, become more engaged in the community, and five received their citizenship. We have also been recruited and we are in year three of the leader in the state for professional development for all adult education programs in our state. We're really solid, so we were courted and said, can you help the other 23 programs also develop these models and have this kind of success? So we are the coordinators and the vision and the support people for across the state for elevating New Mexico in this way. And then as Nina said, we were, and that's Nina's brainchild, received that national recognition as one of 10 programs. Our partners, I don't want to just go through a list, but excellence does not come by ourselves. And one of the main reasons we're successful is we have very strong partnerships, both within our community, across the state, and as Nina mentioned, nationally. And these were just some key ones that come to mind, but there are many more. And today, you'll see, we just found out when CNN and Candace present, that we're actually talking about the success of a shared student. So that's how it happens. We're also really collaborating with our business partners. So it's public and private sector coming together to move us forward. Okay, state and county adult ed dollars, we have pushed that needle significantly. It used to be literally at $400, then $500 and we're increasing, and now we're around It is, we see around $188,000 from the federal and state government to support close to 155 to 600, I mean, to 160, 155 to 200 students a year, or some range. I don't know if $1,200 sounds like a lot, it depends on your bar, where do you compare it to? But it is what public education receives, and I'm a strong supporter of public ed, receives close to 10 times that amount per student. And I'm not talking about capital outlay, I'm talking about direct service. So, so it is, we are incredibly lean and we do a lot with what we have and our vision is really to expand what we do. So in that thing, county again has continued to give us $10,000 a year. That is true for this upcoming year for 1819. I can assure you that we're putting that money to incredibly good use. And we ask that you please consider to invest more. And we're asking for $30,000 because what that will do is rather than us working 70 hours a week, 80 hours a week, and really with a vision, we don't have the capacity. We have the vision, we have the talent, we have the skill, we have the recognition, we have legitimacy, we're strong, but we need greater capacity. So we need more income to expand what we already know is really working. And so we're here today to ask that you please consider increasing your investment in our program and ultimately to our community. So thank you. And thank you for your support. Do you, I want to pull in a student, but I want to ask you if you have any questions for us.
Mr. Chairman? Not yet.
Not yet, okay. So it's my pleasure to introduce Jennevee Boyd, who embodies in so many ways what Taos Education Career Center is all about. So thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennevee Boyd, and yes, I am from Taos, and I grew up in Taos and I went through all the Taos systems. And I dropped out of high school 23 years ago. And I struggled for years and finally hit rock bottom, as you would say in the recovery world. And I've been slowly pulling myself out of this. One of the greatest things I found was education in the recovery world. I brought, I found me here, and Judy, and they said, Jen, let's finish this up, let's start this pack. Not only did they support me and kind of guide me through all the turns and things that you have to do to find like where you were at and where you're going, they're, they're supporting you not only just through the school, but through the whole, the whole process. I, in this, this past January, I graduated with my H I Set. During, during that, they also sent me out to the community health worker program. So in May, I got to walk twice with graduating class of U N M on Thursday night and Friday night, getting my H I Set and my community health worker certification. Being in this program has changed my world. They're still here for me today. They're, I enrolled at U N M as of yesterday, I'm set to go for this next year. I call them, I can go there to work, I can go there to study, I can find resources, they are amazing, they are one of the best little programs in this town. I just highly, highly love them. I just hope you guys support them in every way you can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So at this time, I guess we would just open it up to any questions that you might have.
I just want to thank you for the update and everything, and we appreciate everything that you're doing for our community that obviously works. I was able to attend the U N M graduation, the chairman, it's been really special to see the range and the degrees and the people that we're getting, it's just another really something else.
Thank you, it's one of our most proudest moments.
On that, Mr. Chairman, I wish I were a part of other government entities, Taos, don't claim or forget it, as well as program.
The town of Taos does not get used to, but no longer does, is trying to support us with technical support. They're very interested in that Hive idea that Nina talked about and really want to help move that forward. The other sources of funding, we are also with the community foundations, we have donor advised funds. Chevron and the private sector have helped us with the renewable energy course. And then the bulk of our money comes from the additional initiatives that we're taking that we get grant awards from.
Mr. Chairman, this is, you know, this program kind of reminds me of a lot of what Taos County used to have, that you could build a program 20 years ago, it was very successful. And some of the young people, they're now in their 30s, yeah, 30s, they, they come back to thank me, I was going to the directors with Bruce Armstrong, and it's very fulfilling to see the success that program did. And I, I, I can see that in the future, you know, with these young people, that what you're doing will do the same for them. And I would urge our county manager, you know, if we can up that amount from 10 to 30, I'm sure we have somewhere in the budget, if we can do it and bring it back to the commission, Jenny, of all, I just really appreciate that. I, I think this is where we need to invest some money. And it's very fulfilling to see that you guys are doing so much great work. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And since our final budget approval has just occurred, it's probably going to have to wait until mid-year before they can go away and get another request. All right? Okay. Okay, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Mr. Chairman, I want to congratulate Ms. Boyd for your accomplishments. I hope you find gainful employment in the county. What does H I S E stand for?
It's the High School Equivalency Test. So it's all over called a G E D, and then there's brand names of different tests you can take. You, you can still take the G E D, but it got bought by a private company. The other brand name of the test that students take is called a H I Set. And that's what most people take these days as H I Set.
And Mr. Chairman, I know we need C D L drivers.
Yes.
Canasco can't find drivers. I'm sure it's the same at the test schools, the Blue Bus, so are you encouraging anyone here to?
Yeah. So our vision is that all of the 11 U N M certificates, C D L being one of them, as long as we can prove they're an in-demand industry, which C D L would qualify, they could be run in this I E T model. It's, again, it's a national model that has shown to be very successful. So our goal is that C D L, the entrepreneurial, the hospitality, you know, many of the other certificates would be running this way. The, the $30,000 specifically is to expand the, the I E T models to the other certificates.
Mr. Chairman, if you could just let us know what some of these students are going and planning to do with their lives after they get their diplomas?
Sure. Do you want them?
Just a few, I'm just curious to see.
No pressure.
I got enrolled at U N M Taos yesterday and I'm applying to be an E M T.
I am trying to get my H I Set so that I can go into corrections.
That's where Nina is planning on going to culinary arts school.
I'm not sure.
I'm Ryan, I'm getting my H I Set, hoping to, hopefully get my E M T at some point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell, if you can jump on the spot, we really appreciate it.
I promised them they wouldn't have to talk.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Mr. Chairman, so yeah, you're in, you're amazing, you're one-third of the diplomas in the program. It's such an important thing that, I love that initial quote from Horace Mann, really there is nothing that helps society as much as education. Each, each of the people that you help get diplomas is less likely to end up in need of other services and detention centers and emergency rooms and just gives people the opportunity to become citizens. So it's incredibly important work. I'm really impressed with the I E T model, I know you guys didn't develop it, but obviously you're recognized for your implementation of it. The state has you traveling all over and teaching others, so we're really fortunate to have your exceptional skills here in our, in our county. This, this method of actually teaching for particular jobs is really important. You should contact the hospital about that medical coding, that could be helpful.
Medical coding is included in the Hive model. So it would be one of the main, medical coding, health I T, I T, regular coders, those are all kind of the first certificates that we would go forward to Hive.
Yeah, because they spend a lot of money, people can tell me that, I would like to see that be something they can, I know they could save money on that.
Yeah, well, in any event, I'm very much in agreement with Usea Romero. I would really like to find this money in the budget to create this additional job and help me build the capacity to expand this program. I can't think of anything else that, that is, is more important to our future as, as a community. I know we just finished the budget, I think there's probably some extra money in contracts. We can do a bar adjustment. $30,000 seems like a very reasonable investment for this, and I think it would be a missed opportunity if we, if we didn't follow through with this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for your time today and for your words of encouragement, it's a lot.
Thank you. Okay, our next presentation will be a presentation from Congress Energy Services, and this will be presented by Ms. Hannah Samson.
Good afternoon, or I mean, good morning, it just feels like afternoon. I would just like to, before I start, I want to thank Nina and Judy so much for the work they're doing. And we, I have gone to both those graduations that Jennevee referred to, and we've worked with three women who've gone through that program, who have successfully gotten their high school diplomas and are going on to school, getting their certification. And I think one of the graduates, I swear she just elevated, well, elevated, she was just like flying across the state, she was so happy. So I just want to, again, just encourage that. And we're seeing a lot of connection between our work and the Adult Detention Center, we're trying to get people over to her program and also to the high schools that have already started, that got their degrees. So I just cannot talk highly enough about this program and what they're doing for our community at large, so cheers. So I would like to introduce Candy Allen, who's also working with me at the nurturing center, Jose Gonzalez, which all of you know as well, also works in the nurturing center, but I think he's with a child who's in detention this morning right there. And Ellen Selma Vasquez, who's with the nurturing center up in Canasco, so we have these programs in both those schools now, so I wanted to introduce them, even though they're not here. So I'd like to begin by just thanking you so much for your support for our program. And we have really appreciated the community, the county's support. And also, we've really been able to be more connected, I think, as a result of this. We've been trying to work more closely with the Adult Detention Center. We did a lot of work in the Juvenile Detention Center, and now we're really trying to look at the adults and inspire them to go on to be just like these kids, so that we can see some of the people in there. And every single person that we talk to in the adult detention, we ask them what their educational aspirations are, it's amazing the things they want to do. And so our goal is to help, I have one that, he wants to be an engineer, and I told him to contact me when he got out, he called me on his way out to U N M with his grandpa. And he's from Canasco, and he was on his way out to the university to get enrolled. And I think he owes some money, so I have to wait a semester, but he's still on that track. And I think that's what we'd like to see more of that work happening in the jails, we're connecting people out, getting them out of there and out along to some educational aspirations, so, okay. I wanted to just mention too, that Los Coopers has two other programs that are not represented to be refunded, but they also provide services in the county through C Y D. So they're both preventative programs, so they're working with families trying to prevent them from getting further involvement with the Child Protection Services. So I just wanted to mention there are those two programs as well from our office. And we provided about 50 hours of work per month with families. And over the course of the year, we worked with about 98 families. And of the 98, 68 had issues with incarceration, which is why you're finding us over there so much more. And because we want to see people get out and stay out. And so we're really trying to work more with the judges and we're working with their children in the school, and that's why we're working with parents. So what we're seeing is that children are greatly impacted by their parents being in the detention center and they're often sent on to treatment or to prison. And with, it's just that information is just popping up everywhere. And so we have some of that data, but 68 of, or two-thirds of the people working with are having these issues. And so we're trying to connect children to services, like housing services at the school. So we're really trying to network with the different programs. And we realize that we're going to be talking about Tri-County and what's happening with that, because we had originally set up counseling for these children through Tri-County, because we've had this great program to provide support for families and children. But you know, I want to just say one thing, is that I think that our community is going to pull it together. I feel really optimistic that, we've had several meetings that you have with, but I do think, even though it's in December now, I think the community's going to pull it together and we're going to get these services. We're not going to need a horse, a white horse coming in from somewhere else. I think we'll be able to dissipate those services throughout the command, the community with programs that already exist and be able to enforce and create those support systems. with programs that already exist and be able to enforce and create those support systems for children and families in particular. But I know it's a kind of a crisis right now, but I'm going to remain optimistic. I wanted Candy to talk a little bit about her work with grandparents, which is, it kind of connects, I'm just glad here about the Senior Citizen Day. But I also think we're seeing a lot of grandparents impacted by their children being incarcerated. So I want to let Candy talk about what she's doing with that.
Good morning, and thank you for having us here. I run a program through Los Comrers, mostly located at Inez Garcia, for grandparents raising their grandchildren, or it could be an aunt raising a niece or nephew. But, and we have monthly meetings, which we call support meetings. Everybody is able to communicate what's going on with them. They're not alone. And the kids are also there, and I see them work with the children. And I work with the adults. Then when I started moving into working with parents in the jail, many times their children were being cared for by the grandparents or their parents. And so that was another link that I could work with. And at times, I was working with three generations of a family. The children, the parent, and the grandparent. And I just see that over and over. And it's so difficult for grandparents in this role. They have had to give up being a grandparent. And that's a very special relationship, something they've had to grieve and become a parent. And they weren't expecting this. They may not have any financial resources. It's very difficult to get financial resources for grandparents. They don't really, well, they can get some tannif money only if they agree that the state can go after their children for the child support. It's something they really are most of the time not willing to do. And they have a lot of guilt. They have a lot of questions. They have a lot of fear. And they need a lot of support. I can also provide case management for them, just maybe a ride to go buy groceries, a ride to the doctor, different things. Power of attorney for the grandchildren, so they can take them to the doctor. All those kinds of things that have to be in place. And then I can go back to the school and check in with the children. And maybe say, I saw your mom today, and she's okay, and she misses you. And they get very excited. But there is huge sadness at the same time. So that's a little bit of what I do. And I really want to appreciate your support. This work itself gives me great joy when it goes well. And sometimes it just doesn't go well, and it's very hard to let that go. But we keep showing up. We will keep showing up for these families. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One of the things we're going to be doing this year with your funding is trying to really keep a lens on those children and their families that are incarcerated and have been impacted by it. But one of the things I wanted to give you all is something that's called the Adverse Childhood Experience Questionnaire. And so we're going to start doing this in the jail. I'm going to give it to you now. So this was developed, I think, out of Stanford many years ago. And the intention was, is to look at what kinds of experiences children had when they're young. Because it asks before the age of 18, can these things happen to you? I don't have my own access to that. And so it was established out of Stanford because what they found is that people who had these experiences had much poorer health outcomes. They had higher substance abuse issues, poor physical health, detrimental health issues that just erupts over time. So it was meant to be asked by doctors to kind of look at it. And the question comes up, I'm like, okay, so that happened to you. What am I going to do to help your health? The idea is to like help identify it because they found that just in the asking and allowing people to talk about it, they were more inclined to come back to the doctor. It's a pretty interesting study, and then they were getting better care. But the long-term effect of this on children is to matter. And I would say the vast majority of the children that we see have experienced probably three or four of these things. And they say over four is an indicator of poorer health outcomes. And so what we're starting to do, Candy and I are doing in jails, is asking the residents to fill this out, then asking them, what if you were to have your child do this, what do you think they've experienced? Because if they're incarcerated, they've probably experienced two or three of these other things. So it's really going to be, we'll bring some data back at the end of the year, but you know what we found. But we did have Tammy and her staff do a blind survey in the jail. And we found out that 60% right now anonymously have children. So that's a lot of people with children. And some of them have like a long list of children, older, younger, whole range. So this gives us an indication that really this is a place for me to be. And we're excited about being here. I think Candy really echoes that. It doesn't always go well. Genevieve was like one of those great examples of somebody who's doing like so well. And we would like to have her mentor other families, members, so that we can see her encourage other people to take the same course she took. Because people light up when you ask them what they want to be. We don't often ask those questions to people who are in detention. What would you like to do with your life? And to really give them some sense. Most of those folks are not young. I mean, they're not old. They're young, and they really have aspirations like all of us. And I really want to encourage us to be able to be in their network. I think the other thing I want to just mention, the last thing I want to mention, is that I have this report that was done down in 2006 by Bill Richardson. He was a Blue River Reporting Commission. And it's on the impact of incarceration on children. And he, in this study, recommended, I think, three things. One was that every law enforcement officer at the time of an arrest asks, where do you have children? Where are your children? And who's taking care of your children? And this is something Candy and I met with Donald Gallegos to ask, like, is this something we can see happen in the county? We're going to be meeting with Connie Alma later on this week because we're in the, we're at the finalists for some crowdfunding. And that was what its focus is, to try to look at how, as a community, we can really identify those children. Where are they? Who's raising them? And what kind of services do they need? So I just wanted to, I'm going to give you this copy, but there's three things that it asks. So it's, one was to ask law enforcement, at the time of an arrest, do you have children? Where are those children? Who's taking care of them? The second thing was that every detention center in the state should have a child resource advocate. So it should have somebody in the jail who's asking that same question. Do people have children? What resources can we connect you to? Because all of us here do not want to see another generation in the detention center. Having worked in the Juvenile Detention Center, I can't tell you how many times I had children in there who had parents and aunts and uncles in the adult detention. We want to stop that. And there's no way to stop if we don't intervene early. So that's where I'm coming from, and I can't speak more passionately about it. I just think it's where we need to put our energy and time. And we'll be glad to come back and kind of let you know there's some incredible models across the country that are doing great work with this. And we're researching it all the time. And so I'd like to kind of come back and let you know as I find out better models. And we've, you know, the staff has been receptive at the jail. They've allowed parenting classes, which is pretty cool. And I think they're doing a financial literacy class. So we're trying to get some of those things in the adult detention. But it gives us an opportunity to connect to those families. I'm going to give you this report also. I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, what was the third one you said? Oh, the third one was an arrangement for visitation, to allow children to be able to visit with their parents. And I had this guy who was in there a couple weeks ago. And he hadn't realized his children could come and visit. And he was so excited to see his kids. And both the mother and the father are in jail right now. And the grandmother's raising the children. And so he had to see the child in a month or more, so he was able to really see them.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, we just read the year completion of our budget process. Mr. Quarter, about how much do we spend on a yearly basis in both detention facilities? You are being over $100,000.
Commissioner, are you asking for our total operating budget?
Yeah.
This year, total operating budget, I just spent a million for both facilities since we closed.
It's a lot of money. And I would like to see you have less in there. And I think, you know, there's a lot of things as a community we can do to address it. And I feel really, I feel grateful to have your support. I feel grateful to have programs such as what Judy's offering. I think we have a tremendous amount of the perch, I think, to have some really good things happen in the community.
Mr. Blaind.
Thanks, Chairman. Thank you for all your work in the community. I know you're working with those at the most risk. And I believe you're really helping us in the future. And you make great use of the $30,000 contract that you have with the county. And we really appreciate that. Also appreciate your optimism on the Tri-County closing. I know that you're in trenches in so many of those areas. So it makes me feel good that we've got some hope that we'll be able to.
I mean, the needs are too great to be pessimistic at this point. So I'm not going down yet.
Mr. Quarter.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I just want to thank Kiana from Los Comrers. This is, along with TOS Education Career Center, you guys will be seeing more of these presentations from those nonprofits that have received the money through the RFP. This is our third year of doing the RFP. I want to make it clear that they earn every dime that the county gives to them. They didn't just come and get handed out. The RFP process required them to put together a plan, and they do report back on their plan. And we do see results. And so I want to thank them for that. I also want to remind the board that you guys are up to a little over $400,000 in those kinds of allocations. So yeah, we spend a lot of money at the jail, but we're also spending more and more money to utilize the resources of our partners out there in the nonprofit community to do the things that they would do better than the county could do. And they are doing a great job of that. So we're very grateful for that. And we continue to support them and ask them to work with us. Miss Tannenio and our funding will continue to put out more money as we can. We've done it thoughtfully, so we haven't just thrown any money out there for the community without knowing that they're going to put it to the best use they can. So I'm very grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Blaind.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Samson. Regarding the children, do you have to get permission from the parents to speak to them? And you mentioned advocate in the jail. Are you talking about a part-time position, or what do you see?
Yeah, that was delineated in that report, that Blue River Report, as something that we should, as a state, aspire to have a child resource advocate in every detention center, whether it's part-time, full-time. I think we determine by county. I think that's kind of where we came in. I've been reading this report. I dusted it off, and it's like, it's really old. I'm like, wow. But it's really permanent still today. So I think I was inspired by it, so which is why we've kind of gone in to do it. I kind of feel like that's what our role has been, is to act as that child advocate in creating, connecting resources. I think it could be part-time, full-time. I think that would be up to the county if they were to consider doing it. But I also, what you asked about permission, yes, absolutely, we have to have permission. So when we go into the jail, we have them sign permission. And then we have a form that they have to have in order to be seen at the nurturing center. So that gives the parents permission for them to come in and be seen there. And often, it's never been an issue, basically. I mean, I can't even think of an instance where someone said, no, don't talk to my kids. But I think getting, what's really going to be different is having, connecting counseling services to those children. Because a lot of them need more support than what we are able to offer at the nurturing center. So we're trying to connect them to more in-depth counseling. And there's a little bit more resistance on that front. But I do think we're going to get there. We're working on it all the time. And I think that's where it was such a sad thing to lose the Tri-County services. But I think that it's going to get dispersed across many different agencies. So I'm feeling optimistic that we'll be able to do that, continue to do that service to the kids.
Just another quick question. Could a judge order the children to go to counseling?
You know, CYFD can do that. I don't, but in most cases, CYFD is not involved in these situations at all because at the time of an arrest, somebody else has the children, and the children are safe. So there's no reason for CYFD to be involved. We would like to see the judges ask people. I know Jeff Shannon does. I know I've heard Nakurwo ask, like, do you have children? And who's taking care of them? I don't know if it's within their jurisdiction to actually require counseling. Be a good question, though.
Yes, CYFD.
I think it's, yeah, that would be my, they could encourage it. Because I think just in the asking, they're trying to identify that this in fact does have an impact on their children. But I don't know that they have the real jurisdiction to mandate it. But it's something to explore.
So I'm sorry, one more question. You say 60% in jail have kids. How many children are we talking about roughly right now?
Right, I mean, at this particular point, I would say at least an average of three children per person, 380 kids at least, that would be my guess, that are impacted by people being next door. And I mean, it's profound, and you don't really fully understand what that impact is. That's where a lot of research is coming out on these issues. And so we want to kind of do as soon an intervention as we can. And there's an infant mental health team that's also provided. I don't know if any of you are familiar with it. They're working through the court system, through the, it was first or eighth? Eight, eight. Okay, so there is a funding through the courts, but it's for an infant mental health team. And they work with CYFD very tightly. They work with children zero to three to provide more support in attachment disorder that happens when children are separated from their parents. And they, right now, they're not, it's not open to the general population, but we're looking at a model that's being taught to a couple people that were, that are with Golden Willow right now, and they're being taught in this model. And so we're hopefully going to see that translated into the jail population. So we can see some impact on those young children and their attachment. Because like, for example, this child that I just mentioned, who's with his, if both parents are incarcerated and the grandparents are raising the child, but the child has to have some attachment to somebody because we know how important that is. And so we're getting them connected to this program so that that attachment can work and be solidified. So I think there's a lot of really good, interesting work that can be done. And it's all about prevention from my perspective, like, we want to keep people out. And you and I talked about the whole ankle bracelets, $300 a month. It's like so expensive for people, families who are just stretched to the max.
And then they can't afford it, and they go back to jail.
Right. So here are all these complicated things. And then you had, that was, that particular family has three children in the school. We're trying to connect them to some counseling. But the parent is in and out right now. But the jail, the ankle bracelet kept her in.
And had a job if she was out.
Yeah, totally. And it was like, they're paying $900 a month in rent. You have $300 for that. That's a big bill every month. And it's a real struggle for these families to pay that. And so anyway, she wasn't on house arrest, which is why she didn't qualify for the assistance for the jail, for the bracelet. I know, it's another, it's a whole, that's a whole other discussion.
Yeah.
At another time. But anyway, it's a big, it's another, you know, because we're looking at this. We have to, we've put money on their commissary to pay for toilet paper. I mean, really, it's like, whoa, it's like, there's so much they need. I'm trying to, the other thing we're trying to do is connect them to their children. So I had one, I was like, then I have him write a letter to his child. But I realized they warned me that they would charge me with a felony if I took the letter out of the jail to the child. So I, so he's, I had the money so he can mail it in an envelope. I had the money on it so he could get a stamp in an envelope to mail it to the school so he could get it to the child. But anyway, we're trying to make, be creative about ways we can get children in connection with their parents. So.
Thank you.
Well, we won't put a felony in the meantime.
Okay, don't do that. I'll take your bear away with me. All right. Thank you, Commissioner.
Next item on the agenda is item number 10, our consent agenda. I'll read the consent agenda. And if any commissioner has one item that wants to be pulled off, that will be the next business conducted prior to moving on in the agenda. Item A is approval and acceptance of grant agreement number one for the current capital appropriations, 6-84093 for Yano Kamado Community Center, 16-82516 for Taos County Veteran Cemetery.
dash eight two five one six for Taos County Veteran Cemetery, sixteen dash eight two five one seven for Amalia Community Center, sixteen dash eight two five one nine Northern New Mexico Sequia Archive, sixteen dash eight two five two zero for the Old County Courthouse. Item B is budget adjustment for the Ostrogram Program, two two one nine dash zero one one seven to allocate budget according to approved grant agreement for fiscal year 2019. Item C is budget adjustment for senior program, zero two one nine dash zero one one four to allocate budget for subscriptions of software for my senior program purchased last fiscal year. Item D is approval of resolution number 2018 dash forty-eight, resolution approving fixed assets annual inventory. Finally, item E is approval of juvenile adjudication fund grant application for one half of a full-time position to assist with the teen court coordinator duties that pertain to Taos County Teen Court Program. Commissioners, as the consent agenda is presented, I seek the motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of consent agenda, exception of item A? I'll start with the motion.
I have a motion to approve items B, C, D, and E of the consent agenda. Next item of the business will become item A.
Press call.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Doherty?
Yes.
Commissioner, thank you, Mr.
Yes.
Vice Chair, I go.
We may have lost, like, we have a phone issue, but we'll see if we can get it back.
Chair Cameron.
Yes.
Okay, item A is approval of acceptance of grant agreement for capital appropriations, six, well, without the numbers, it's Yanakamalo Community Center, Taos County Veteran Cemetery, Amalia Community Center, and Northern New Mexico Sequia Archive, and the Old County Courthouse.
Commissioner, just more information on this for the public staff as long as you can.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Romero, these are all existing grants that we have had already come before the board. The Department of Finance Administration announced some changes to how they distributed the grant agreements, and so they have reissued the grant agreements. The main changes are to the request for payment and the notice of obligation and forms and the reporting process. So really, in a nutshell, this makes it easier for us to be able to report and for us to be able to do drawdowns and allocate the monies, but these are all existing grants, and so this is something that all the departments have asked to pass in order to create those easier forms.
Mr. Chairman, with regards to the Yanakamalo Community Center, what building improvements are being proposed?
I believe we've managed most of the improvements that have been requested. There is a balance debt on the funding. I believe it's simple things like painting and doing some wall upgrade improvements so that we don't scuff the walls, but for the most part, we've done a new style over there at Yanakamalo behind the building. We've done some other improvements, and so I think we're pretty much done spending that money at Yanakamalo.
And the Veteran Cemetery?
Veteran Cemetery, we've been appropriated another grant for this year, so we're waiting for that grant agreement, combining the funds, and we're looking at the next step for the Veteran Cemetery, being installing some of the cribs against that they are to bury. So that's what we're looking at, what we do need in grant agreement to accomplish that.
And then the next one, if you can describe that.
So the Amalia Community Center has pretty much been expended. If there's anything left, I would probably use it for a couple kitchen improvements for the floor. That building is pretty much complete, except for the floors. Our facilities management is going to be up there actually this week to do an epoxy on the cement floors. The Northern New Mexico Sequia Archive was the appropriation we received for UNM Taos to be able to create the Sequia Archive. As I recall, we spent most of the money. There's a small balance left, about $3,000 bucks that we have to get with UNM to see if they have any other expenditures.
That was requested by UNM, not by us. That just fell in the lap.
And then the $150,000 for the old historic courthouse, that's money that we intend to combine with hopefully our CDVG allocation that we'll be ordering for in a couple weeks. So once we know what CDVG looks like, we'll be spending that money pretty quickly to do the contracting.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman?
I have a motion, a second to approve item A from the consent agenda that was pulled, approval of numerous grant agreements, number one of capital appropriations.
Press call.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Doherty?
Yes.
Commissioner, thank you, Mr.
Yes.
Chair Cameron.
Yes. Thank you. Item 11 under Department of Management, the first is the investment committee being reported to Taos County Board of Finance, which is us for fiscal year 2018, fourth quarter. It's presented by our treasurer, Susan Truitt.
Good morning, commissioners, good viewing audience, and I'd like the commissioners to take off their commission hats and put on their hats of the Board of Finance. As the treasurer, the treasurer's office presents the investment report as it was presented to the investment committee at an investment committee meeting, and which was held on August the 8th, 2018, at 10:38 a.m. at the executive conference room. I was in attendance, Paul Stanis David was in attendance, Mary Ann DeFosse was in attendance, the Adcora Board was in attendance, and Lulu Martins then her alternate, which was Jonathan Montoya, and Jim Brammer was not able to attend, but he received the, he came by and gave us a packet. We gave him a packet of all his work beyond the meeting.
And commissioners, it's because there was a little Corpus Bridge engineering meeting that I had in town that was scheduled at the same time, but I did meet with Susan Truitt at the meeting, she got the report.
And Rose Marcus from US Bank, main office manager, was at the meeting. So I, what I did is I presented the fourth quarter treasurer's report, and by the fourth quarter treasurer's report, I'd like to refer you to the end of the fiscal year analysis. And what I do with this report, this is kind of a snapshot of all the, what goes on in the treasurer's reports, and which again gives you the final budget in the revenues and transfers and any adjustments that are made within the fiscal year and the adjusted budget. And so based on that, I go in and I do a cash analysis. I take the revenues, which were $13,822,685, and then I minus off the expenditures, which are the $10,276,31, and I minus off the transfers out of the general fund, which is the $4,110,986, excuse me, $4,110,986. So at least, and I give a balance of $164,331 as a cash analysis. But then what I did is, on the second blue column, I go and I, and I just itemize exactly how the transfers went out of each of the governmental funds to your left, which is the EMS ambulance, the senior program, the detention center, the public works, the emergency 911, the grant managed fund, the capital enhancement fund, the transfers in of the USDA complex fund, the transfers in and out of the loans, the temporary loans, and so that again gives us a $564,331 to make four cents as a negative cash balance for that year. But then what I did is I went and I spoke with the finance director, and I says, I want to know if, well, I took out, you can see I took out the ins and outs of the temporary transfers, which are from the cash balance. I'm assuming that even though we're getting revenues in, but the initial money that was loaned out to the grants was from the cash, the uncharted cash balance. So I took those monies out, and then I also took out the money from the capital enhancement fund that was transferred out, which was $1276,000, I took that out. So it leaves us with a, with a transfers out of $2,459,298, which then gives us a plus of $1,87,256 in savings. So if you look to the right in the final column, we, that $34,078 is a plus because we gained that in revenues, and in expenditures, they gained $1,405,000 that they did not spend against the budget. And even though they transferred out $838,488 more in transfers out, but we gained overall $600,906. So overall, my analysis proves that it was a good turnout for the general fund, and I included in there your general fund cash balance, which at the end of the year was $633,779 to make four cents, and then I included the cash balance for the public works, and you minus off the reserve monies, and I included the reserve monies as $112, which is $158,52. And so you have a balance of $283,611. And in the emergency 911, the two of them, $725,000, the senior program, the 1919, $183,000, the detention center, it's at a low of $3,427, the grant manage, the grant manage is $22,183,000, the capital enhancement fund is $714,000, and that's just because they just have received a pill in June. And then EMS ambulance, ambulance cash balance is $273,000. So I calculated the total, which is $4,192,000, and cash balances in all these funds, and that turns to be a very good, healthy banking cash balance for all these governmental funds. And so the next page is the detail about receipts for the treasurer's office in what is most importantly for the council to provide the services for the general fund, and that is property tax. And again, if you look at the approved budget, it was $10,456,000. There was no adjustment made at the end of the fiscal year, so we gained over budget The prior year tax, property tax prior year, the budget, the initial budget was $825,000. There was a budget increase of $25,000, which made it $850,000, and we were shot of that amount by $38,571,09, but if, and then you have the property interest in penalties, again, there was the budget, the initial budget was $300,000, the budget was increased to $36,000, so it made the final adjusted budget of $336,000. So we gained $28,770,26 on the adjusted budget, which is at the very bottom, there's a total of $8,370,70. But if you look at the little blocks in the top, in the preliminary budget, not in the preliminary budget, but in the original budget, the total was $69,370,70, we had not adjusted the budget, but overall, again, it was, we had a good collection.
Mr. Chairman, is it my vision, or these numbers just don't print clearly, or they're not coming out?
Oh, where?
On your sheet.
Oh, I'm not sure, they, no, I just, are you looking at that? Is that the way they come out?
Yeah.
You know what?
Scanning in, and they're big.
I see.
But you know what, I have, I have.
They're starting to appear a little bit better. It's not for a while there, it was my vision.
I have some here. Maybe you and the chair can share.
You're fine?
You're fine, yeah.
You're good on yours? Okay, hold.
You have yours?
You gave it to me.
Okay, here, let me go ahead. And I'd like to say that in the previous years, we had, our collections had been higher against the budget. Then again, the budgets were raised so that they could utilize the cash that was in excess. So that proved to be a good thing for the general fund. The next sheet that I have given you is the quarterly detail of GRT receipts. And again, as part of the budget, the finance department had given you the schedule that the sheet provides through the quarterly report, and this is a little more detailed. It gives you the monies in each order, and the year-to-date casualty receipts, and the approved budget, and the adjustments that were made to the budget, and the final adjusted budget. And so if you look at the budget at the very top, it should be at 100%, so with the adjusted budget, all the monies were at 100% received against the budget after the adjustments were made. But again, if you look at the increments of the general fund, it, there's been $56,139 in the GRTs, which is the third month, and the one-fourth of, the three-fourths of the 116 infrastructure, so, excuse me, and overall, we're getting the monies that were enacted. And are there any questions on this, you know, without going into detail? I believe that you can, you can look at it, and study any further, and if you have any questions, you can always come by my office, and I will explain. But all in all, that we have the debt that comes out of the GRTs, and they were all interceptive, while they, all the debt service was met, so overall, it was good. I mean, you see at the very bottom, this equals to the 7.3125%, so again, the distribution that is made throughout all the funds in the county and the enactment's all there. And this is something that you all should know exactly how the percentages are, and where each enactment is, how it runs each one of these funds. The next slide you'll see is again the Taos County General Fund account graphic, and it's just a picture of how the money moves as it begins on July 1st, and then it kind of takes a dip down because the money, we don't get any revenues, and how it dips down with them, you come into November and December, and it just kind of climbs up, and that's our peak collections, and then again, it starts going down because we get our huge bills, some insurance system that we have to pay, and it kind of dips down. But on the next page, you will find all the monthly ending balances that make up that initial picture of the graph. And that almost kind of tells a story, because again, I quoted you at the very end in June, and the 1718 line, the cash balance was $633,779,094. Again, that, I always like to take the difference between the prior year and this year, and there was a negative $564,331, and the 312 reserve was $2,917,355, and the remaining balance of $3,424,424, we, the investments off of that reserve, and it's the best investments that are made off of that reserve are $3250,000. And so the addition. And so the additional investments over the reserve that we have are three hundred thirty-eight thousand. So six hundred forty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. And then we have our, the four-twelve reserve that we're documenting at nine hundred seventy thousand, four hundred fifty-one dollars, which leads to remaining balance of two million, four hundred fifty-one dollars and, like, two million, four hundred fifty-one thousand, nine hundred seventy-two dollars and eighty-four cents. The next, any questions on this page?
Mr. Chairman, just a comment, interesting, that flies. You know, like the GRT on this complex, the original loan that was obtained of what, back in two thousand and eight? It's been already ten years?
And actually, those numbers are going to change because now in July, on the next quarter, you're going to see a shift in those GRTs. So you'll be able to track that. That this is kind, these are, this is a report that I provided for the investment. And I just decided, being that it was June thirty and then the end of the fiscal year, that I would provide a copy with that information so that you know how the numbers come together to be able to make the investments that we make and how the, how my analysis, you know, the analysis of the treasures office, how, it's like a second set of lies. And it also tells a story, I believe, of what occurred over the years. And actually, over each quarter, but at the end of the year. And then the next page is the investment monthly report. And that is handled by my chief, but the treasurer, same as the sheet, monitors the investments. But again, we had a couple of investments going out. And that was on August the twenty-seventeenth. And then the three, seven, those two went up. And so as you can see, they were at point seventy-five percent and point eight, eight zero percent, and they went up to two point four percent and two point eight percent. So that's a good thing because in total, at the end of the year-to-date interest collected for the three point two hundred fifty thousand dollar investment that we made, three million, two hundred fifty thousand dollar investment, we made fifty-nine thousand, ninety dollars and four cents in interest for just, for the general fund. And then we have the monies from the USDA Fund Four-Eleven. And we made three thousand, seven hundred seventeen dollars and eighty-one cents on seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. And again, that one also moved up almost to one basis point, I would think. But then the next page, we have, we looked at the end of the general fund also. And there was money that we could invest. And out of the million, fifty-six dollars and fifty-one cents, the accumulated interest is seven thousand, three hundred eighty-nine dollars and two cents. So that's money that, again, is, goes into the funds. So the next page, and I believe that this question was asked at some point and about how the monies were invested and how it flows through. And the county does not pay any brokerage fees. But what is charged are, there are some, they're called some concession, some concessions. And that is paid by the, by the next US banks to Morton Capital, who is, basically, he's kind of like a brokerage firm. But it says here, community and local banks want deposits. However, they don't have the sales force to sell their CDs. Each bank sets, excuse me, the terms and conditions of each CD. Then these banks will pay brokerage firm to sell their CDs for them. The payment is called a sale concession. And then, so we're here at the bottom, the public entities wanting to invest. All CDs are FDIC insured and there are no out-of-pocket fees or expense to the purchase. So that's how it works. And I decided to provide this for you and so that you will have a picture of how those investments are purchased and how money flows. And I'm, on the next page.
This is right.
And but here's the open house, finance director. At the end of the year, when we were being audited, we always had to send out those to our chairman of finance, who then held our loans and to get verification and to reconcile our, what we were recording in our books and what they had in our balances. And I asked them if they would put together a reconciliation. And we both worked on this and with the information that I was being asked by the auditors. So they prepared this spreadsheet for us. And at the very top, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven loans. And there, and it also includes the new one on there. So these are the loans that are currently being financed by the, by the national finance authority. And then the others are the paid-off calls. And there's, on both pages, front and back, that we have loans that have monies that we have borrowed primarily for the fire districts and for the solid waste. But also, it also shows at the very, very bottom, the closing of the last, or the restructuring of the loan, which is Towns Forty. And that was the county capital outlay. And GRT county infrastructure, the correctional, all of that. And which was, the original loan was thirty-three million, two hundred sixty thousand. And it was paid off on June first of twenty eighteen. And so it kind of shows all the balances of the principal paid and the intercept payments that were being made and the total interest paid to date on that particular loan. So it's all just interesting information. But then when you go back to this new one that we have, and there's the refunding of the administration complex. And it's, the original loan now is twenty-two million, six hundred eighty-five thousand. And the long balance is the same. And again, the scheduled maturity is June first, the year twenty thousand thirty-eight. And the payments are going to be a hundred and eighty thousand to a hundred and forty thousand monthly, a hundred and forty-seven thousand. They used to be a hundred and sixty-four thousand. So, but again, this is just detailed information for you. And you'll compare probably to next year. But again, I just thought that that would be a good thing for you to know, like, what loans that you have. And what I've also attached, again, as part of the financial report that the finance provides is a part of the report, and she presented that to you all earlier, two weeks ago. So I'm not going to go over that. But it reconciles, but it reconciles to the numbers that I have presented in the report.
So Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for this presentation. Really good to see all these numbers. And on the refunding of the administrative complex, the intercept payments, the last numbers of a hundred and forty-seven to ninety-five annually. What does that do? How does that kind of be explained out a little bit?
Well, what will happen is that these monies will be intercepted from the GRT.
Right.
And so they're going to show up in this other sheet that you have over here in this GRT, will be able to track that there, exactly what they're going to be intercepting.
Okay. And so, so the other way, at what point will then the county be able to go back in refund or extend on this loan?
So as you mentioned, the ten-year mark was the call date for the original bonds from the original, that's when we went in and we went forward with the refunding. Now, at this point, basically, whenever it's favorable to the county, we can take a look at refunding again. We did save approximately three million dollars over the life of the loan on interest from this refunding. So I would anticipate we would look at it maybe in two, three years. There were still cost of issuance fees, things like that, that we probably want to run out a couple of years on the clock to recoup those. And hopefully, the interest rates data, the interest rates start going up, we may not benefit again from doing another refunding because the rates were pretty good this time. And that's why we were able to name the savings that we had. But basically, ten years after the original bond is when we started looking at how to refund. And I think we've probably refunded everything that we have an opportunity to refund. We've even looked at USDA loans on the complex. Those don't have as much of a secondary market. And so we're still looking at those. If an opportunity comes across to refund those, we will pursue that as well. But I think for the most part, right now, we're kind of focused on paint off of those loans that the fire systems got out. And I think there's two or three coming due in the next couple of years that we're excited, to be honest.
So in terms of this building, what are the current needs at this point, areas that need to be revolved and stuff like that? Halling, electrical work that needs to be fixed? I understand the treasures office had some leaks and I'm not sure if we finally found the sources and if they were fixed.
And they were.
Okay.
I would say our biggest need right now, Commissioner Erwin, is in the sensors office from the building, from the time the building was built. And now we've seen some settling, pretty significant amount of settling, which has caused some cracks and issues like that. So we have used our structural engineer, our oncologist engineer, who have contacted the structural engineer and taken a look at it. And now we're probably ready to put out an RFP to figure out how to fix it, how to remedy it. There's also cracking, settling throughout the complex. So we have another concern near the courthouse where our fire suppression systems, we need to fix that and show that up. So right now, those are probably the biggest issues that the complex has. There's a lot of little things that are popping up. So we're looking at repainting, eventually both repaints chambers. We're looking at new audio visual here in these chambers. Some of our mics and stuff aren't exactly the newest tech to replace those kind of things. So that's what we're looking at right now. There's also some issues on the courtyard, cement that has cracked or settled. We've got a couple of refixments that need to be back to continue everything.
Thank you.
And also, because there has been a conservative approach to all of this. There's, the values accumulated in the fund one-on-three, the excess. The excess that of the GRT that comes in is put into that fund, which will be able to take care of some of the needs of the complex.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else? Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for allowing me to present to you. It's always my honor.
Thank you. Okay, I am being under Department of Matters as discussion consideration regarding the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-four infrastructural capital improvement plan, which is commonly known as the ICIP. This has been put together by our grants administrator, Lori Montoya. Hi, Lori.
Morning, Chair. Morning, commissioners. So before you today, we have our discussion and consideration, the ICIP. I just wanted to try to remind you, to tie your to, when you're reviewing that, that the ICIP is a plan that is established for priorities or anticipated capital projects. It covers a five-year fiscal period. And it's also developed and updated and submitted annually to local government division. The changes, or what's before you actually, is the proposed twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-four ICIP. I met with Department of Transit and Management, and this is the proposed list that we're presenting to you today. I will come back at the next meeting for approval and acceptance. So I would like to let you know what we removed from last year's list. And if you have any questions, but we removed Los Cortez Bridge. We're obviously working on that now. We have rebuilt Los Cucrios Road, the clerk's retention, clerk's records retention, because that's being completed with the senior center. And also Bayos Road and Rabbit Valley Road and Old Santa Fe Road. And I've included on their sacristo ball fire tender for Mike, for the fire. And we have also included La Morada Road on the top ten.
If I could, Lori, on the item number ten, the sacristo fire ground tender, that was requested by Representative Nolz to be added to our ICIP because he pledged funding for the river cutting for that. So that's, here's my question. Uh, Mr. Erwin, elaborate on Old Santa Fe Road and Tulsa-Lamora Road. Which one of those is?
I'm going to have that from one of the, from one of the six.
Chairman, commissioners, your question was, elaborate on Old Santa Fe Road and La Morada Road. Which one of those is?
La Morada and Alamo. Is this the one that we're working on, the realignment?
Right.
It's in the process right now. We've got Mr. Arbetas engineering firm up there, doing what he has to do to see what you think about realigning, whether it will be in the center.
Were you able to reduce the dollar value on that proposed contract with Mr. Arbetas?
Yes, we did bring it outside, yes.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Erwin did focus on just the realignment. I think the most pressing problem might be the backside of the road. We could get that down, took out the scorching balance and really keep focus of where it was being discussed.
What was it all around?
I don't have it on yet.
Unfortunately, I don't have it on yet either. I'll ask Mr. Arbetas, we're going to get back to you. But we brought it down to the road, we feel comfortable, we're going to go forward on that, if the engineers will get it completed and then we can start talking to property owners and make a second decision.
Okay, and what about Old Santa Fe?
Old Santa Fe Road, the section that isn't paved, we still have a pumping issue with the swamp that happens there. I figured if we pave it, we're just going to be repairing it too often.
So what's the plan?
Leave it dirt. The swamp, I don't know what's going on with that swamp. I couldn't tell you. If I had put in the water line or shoreline that's through there, activated it, and once in a while, that will pump against the sponge. I don't know if it was because of the infrastructure installment or it's just the swamp, the swamp's doing it.
Has it happened before?
It has happened, yes. Wet winters, wet summers, it'll do its thing. So maybe we just leave it dirt, it's easier to maintain. We can always add more dirt as far as you add more asphalt and start correcting.
And Mr. Chairman, commissioners, just a reminder that I requested, I have mission, we're moving forward with the complete road inventory country. So we are going to be green W H Pacific and a contract specific to do that and give us recommendations on some of these roads that, you know, we kind of had, thrown our hands up and said, well, the best way to do it right now is to keep it, well, the engineers will give us a better perspective as to how to develop it for a long-term project. So we're still on track at that, still in the, this business.
After we do W H Pacific?
We've been moving along with them. We have a cohort with them. They have been helping us with some of our roads and they have some of the area. So at this time, we're continuing forward with them. They've done it for other agencies in the past, get a final final name.
A couple of questions if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Erwin.
Mr. Ty, could you tell me what was the last road that you removed? I have, I'm all except after Rabbit Valley.
After Rabbit Valley was Old Santa Fe Road.
So that's been removed.
And then, well, I remember those have been completed.
Oh, these are all completed.
And all the lists, okay.
The corn bridge, did we ever get an answer whether, who owns that bridge?
Which one?
The bar bridge?
We don't have an official, I mean, the state is saying that they, they may be theirs, it may be ours. We have not gotten an official answer. We asked the state, the state hasn't really helped us find the answer. But they're the ones that have kind of complicated the conversation, saying, it may be theirs. So we'll continue to try and get an answer. If I got exactly, you know, that bridge?
We haven't had a definite answer, this is determined in eighteen years.
Actually, twenty-four years.
That's all.
And are we talking?
Giving a money, a senior center, run for its money.
This is.
Are we talking Cuchia Road in my district or in another district? I'm just curious. We've got Cuchia Road listed, San Pernasco or the term. You've got Cuchilla Road listed, San Pernasco or the town.
That might be the Cuchilla Road in your district to complete from the bridge off the highway to the side of the hill.
Then, Mr. Manager, do we need to add a curb, Rolllano, to this list or not?
Um, we actually had it on this, we talked about it. We feel like we could probably accomplish that in house. I mean, we hoped to have moved forward with it this year, so that was a part of why it fell off. It may be one that we put back on, but we did have to, we're kind of faced with a challenge of removing more than adding. So the local government division asked us to continue and keep cutting this list and make it a very viable possible list. So that's why we looked at a few of these projects that, and Laurie, probably have to put back on, but hopefully that project is what that we get done before we, in fact, we do these decisions.
And this is just a rhetorical question, you'd have to answer, but people wrote, I see you.
I didn't see replacement of an ambulance listed anywhere here. I would like to see somewhere possibly because of the interest that Representative Nolos showed to us during that river cutting and I would like to see the addition of an ambulance. Our ambulance is 200,000 miles and four transfers the other, I think it was, the day I had multilined. No, they did, I stand corrected, five transfers that day. So I would like to see the addition of an ambulance at some point, add it to this point in the top 25.
Any other questions?
Chairman, Commissioner, like Ms. Montoya mentioned, we'll be bringing this back for adoption on the September 4 meeting. So if you have any other concerns, questions, feel free to send them to me or Ms. Montoya. I know you are best to incorporate them. We were really trying to keep them at 50 max. So I think we're at 49 projects on here. So if there's something that we still want, or something anything we need to remove, let us know and we would hope to try to get to the 50 projects.
Thanks, Laurie.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, for a five-minute break, seven minutes?
10 minutes.
10 minutes break.
I'll say it, Mr. Truett. Motion is second to have a 10-minute break reconvening at 11:05 for public roll.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, motion to come back into session.
I can't say, I don't want to motion.
I'll say it. Motion is second to come back into regular session for public roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Yes. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes. Okay, good. Hopefully Commissioner O'Donnell goes back on the phone for this portion, which is item 12, County Managers Report of Matters. First will be discussion, consideration and decision regarding the Ag Center refund. Let's make sure we get more on that. So Cherry, how close are we on that? Real close? The tires? There's one, two.
Here's Chris.
So Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, item A, basically I wanted to come back and give you a little update as to where we were with the Ag Center. We did put out an RFP in May. The lowest bid that we received on the RFP for the Ag Center was 616,000. We had roughly 250,000 to 300,000 set aside. So we did have to reject all offers at that time and see what our options were in terms of more funding. I've talked to Mr. Sanchez and we feel like we can work this both ways. We obviously need more money to be able to do and complete the project, but we can also look at some deductions on the RFP. We're doing some stuff in-house, especially things like dirt work that we can accomplish ourselves. So request today, the formal request is, we do have the entire loan proceeds from the restructuring of that lodgerage tax loan we did about three years ago. The clock is running on that money. I would ask the board to allow us to use the entire loan proceeds, which is about $500,000, to go ahead and complete the Ag Center instead of using it for the historic county courthouse. That in turn will mean that I'll be coming back after we know about CDDG and asking the board if we could use reserves, unbudgeted reserves, to then make up for the 250,000 we're taking from the courthouse, plus something. If we know what our contractor is going to ask for, once we can put the bid out for the courthouse, I might come back and ask for more than 250,000 for the courthouse. But right now, we have an RFP, we can trim a little bit on one end. If we add more money to the funding, we can put that RFP back out and hopefully can award it to a contractor and get the work started. Hopefully get that project complete prior to us putting out the RFP for the historic courthouse. So that is my request right now, formal request. I did meet with some members of the fair board last week. They obviously want to see this project complete. I know the board wants to see this project complete. The longer we wait, the more expensive the project's getting, obviously. We cannot afford the 616,000, but I do feel like if we could commit the entire 500,000 and we put out the RFP that comes in at 550,000 and they ask for 50,000 in reserves to complete it at that point. But I just need to know that we have a commitment of at least the 500,000 so that we can not, basically put out the RFP in good faith. The contractors that gave us quotes, they were fair quotes. It's just, we've come a long way from the original architectural design to where the prices are right now. It's a metal building, a lot of metal we needed. The tariffs have driven up the price on metal as a whole and so that's why I asked at this time.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Could you refresh our memory? I seem to believe in 2015, we took a loan out on the courthouse and the Ag Center and it was for 750,000 and some of that money went to the courthouse. Do you recall the total amount? Was it the 750,000?
Yes, what we did at that time was refund a loan that was pledged on lodgerage tax. It was a USDA loan. They had an interest rate of 40-year term. We refunded that and got new money of the 750,000, as you can do. We had at that time, as I recall, soft, we committed 500,000 to the courthouse and 250,000 to the Ag Center. I'm asking that and switch that to 500,000 for the Ag Center and 250,000 for the courthouse. Obviously, like I said, we get an RFP back at 550,000, we may ask for the other 50,000 also to be funded for the Ag Center, but the short form courthouse will still, I'll be asking to use, to use the unfunded reserves that we have available to us to complete both projects. We do need to complete both projects.
And Mr. Chairman, a year or so ago, I had asked for showers. I understand nothing happened, but I would have appreciated, like you said, that there would be a follow-up from our construction project manager that never got done, he never appeared before us. And whether it costs 20,000 or 30,000, I just would have appreciated a follow-up from our construction manager. That being said, I understand the portable showers would be an alternative, you know, I like that idea if we can get it done. Now, let's say we move forward on the Ag Building, can we have a separate project manager from this project? I mean, can we have an outside person brought in to make sure this is fast-tracked and that we are not waiting another 20 years to get this done?
We do have a construction manager on salary. I think that we are capable of allowing him to take a shot at this project and get it done.
But isn't he running the facility build and other projects? And I mean, it's things like, we were supposed to have an installation of Floyd Archuleta's farmer. That's, you know, I mean, I just think maybe he's overworked and maybe we need to find someone who can run this project efficiently and get it done.
You said all the content, but I do feel like, as I said, we have someone on staff that can get these things done. We have completed a few projects, some of these the hall is complete, so we're working big well on the senior building. So I do think we can continue to allow Mr. Sanchez to take the lead on these, but I'll say it.
Thank you.
So Mr. Chairman, concerns for me, obviously, both Ag Center and courthouse are, remain very important for me as individual county commissioner and I'm sure for the entire commission as well. I would like to see some sort of a timeline being under as to when these things, with the way you're going to exchange funding, when these things are going to get done. So hearing from CDDG is the fit. Yeah, but I'd still like to see something written. We won't know until we know what the award is for that. I just want to see something written and on paper from you as to when these things are going to get done.
And as the chairman mentioned, we're waiting at a pretty crucial date, which is September 5th, for us to present to the Community Development Council on our request for 750,000 additional funding to complete the historic county courthouse. So upon knowing that, we present on the 5th, I believe, they will have answers the week after. So probably sometime in mid-September, I can give you a better timeline. And we'll go from there. We have gotten some timeline, as we all know, we were ready to allow bid on the courthouse. This opportunity for an additional 750,000 came up and we decided we should pursue it. That was money that's pretty likely, and I don't want to jinx it, but we did find a good angle on the 88 compliance and so I do feel confident about getting that funding so that that project can be advanced even further. So I agree that you know how important it is. That was our reasons for pursuing extra money so that we could get as much as possible completed, but we actually have them.
And in terms of the Ag Center, what will happen there, where, what is this money going to be doing?
So depending on the decision to be, which is why we're here, to allow for more funding. So if we do get a decision to reduce 500,000, we'll put it back out to RFP. As I said, we'll trim down some of the ask, we'll do some deductive parts of the RFP to see if we can do certain things in-house or that if we get a high bid again, we can deduct certain things to get us within the 5 to 550,000 range. Once we have a number we can work with, we'll award it to whoever contractor comes in, we'll get the project started.
And what are those things, what do we want to see accomplished?
Well, I'll let Richard talk about that, but basically the extension to the arenas, they're going to have a concession stand, bathrooms in that area, there's some classrooms that I recall and that's part of the plans. And I'll let Richard give my feedback.
Commissioner, Chairman?
Hey.
Good. What we can do is kind of what we did with the Madio. In the Madio, we purchased a bunch of the material to start off with. It's about the same kind of project. We have a shell, we have a roofed, roofed, and plummy and we don't have anything on the inside. Got to bring our cost down in the Madio, we purchased all our framing material, we purchased plumbing fixtures, we did do some self-reliance ourselves. We salvaged heaters, one from the historic courthouse after we put in the heating system so that we did not purchase those heating units and have markup on all the materials. At the Ag Center, we can purchase the framing package, we can purchase plumbing fixtures, we can do the utility work, which all saves significance about because there's no markup on that material. The utility work, we need a fire line, we need marble water, we need natural gas, that's, we have a good staff. All it works, did the site with the seniors and all the tests passed, it was well done. So we do have the staff and the talent to do some of these cost savings.
In terms of, and I'd like to hear from Peter and Mr. Robes and Monica, in terms of the drainage, the parking lot at the Ag Center, are there issues with that? Are they going to be corrected?
There are issues with it. It's been an issue for several years, hadn't been addressed. Currently, we're out there regrading the whole east side of the arena where the pens are. It should be an issue this year, but to properly do it, we really need to go in and take out probably 200 tons of material. The north side of the building should be six inches lower than what it is right now. It's even with the inside of the grade. So when the water runs off of the roof and there's a big dump or it drains back into the building. By building code, your grade is supposed to be six inches lower than finished floor. It's not right now. We're working to alleviate the drainage and the high spots that are holding water. So that should be an issue this year, but to do it correctly, we should go in and regrade on one more side, take out the excess material.
That can be done internally by the department?
Yes.
Does it need to be engineered?
I'm sorry, what's?
Does it need to be engineered?
Uh, not really. I mean, we can't be engineered. Don't have the cars.
So does he spend, what, half a million dollars on rebuilding existing and adding? And what happens if we get flooding from the parking lot?
It'd probably be a 100-year flood if we got flooding from the parking lot.
Look what happened in Santa Fe.
Right. The building is significantly lower without curbing gutter and that kind of improvements, it's hard to stop something like that. But we can put in curbing gutters. Over the years, they've also built up the south side. The south side used to get cut probably about two feet and regraded. None of that's been done in the past. So right now, you have a high side on the south side, you have a high side on the north side and some water goes to the building. We're taking care of the foot entry and pens this year, but it's really a stopgap solution that really should be regraded on the east side.
So Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I really think that we need to come up with an immediate plan for the parking lot as well. And if the county road department can do that, we should find to do that.
It's obvious that they can do it. I mean, if you want, we guarantee.
We have to protect our investment.
That's correct. Then you need to hire a civil engineer to do civil work. You might have to pay for curbing gutter, you might have to pay for a little bit more asphalt to really make it function correctly. But, but it is doable, but it's never been done. So Mr. Chairman, I think as our manager, you need to take that into consideration and act on it.
Certainly have, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell. So we are working on that drainage, have it ready now, I think you have it out there Friday, working on drainage for the weekend. It's coming up with fair. We'll certainly continue to improve that drainage. We're here today to talk about the construction and make sure we have it both. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I fully support what you are proposing because I do believe that 750,000 dollar loan, we have a certain amount of time to use it. And the funding going into the courthouse is kind of iffy, we don't know our timelines. But when do we have to expend this money? By when?
The deadline is actually coming up here in the next month. So we'll be asking for an extension, but we need to have a plan of action on that extension and that's why we're here today to ask.
So if I'm in order, I'll make a motion that we, Mr. Chairman, is that in my order?
Sure, it is. I also have discussions still in common. Commissioner Blanknor has been waiting his turn to comment as well, but he hasn't been given that opportunity. Do I hear a second?
I'll say it for Mr. Truett.
Commissioner Blanknor.
Mr. Chairman, so the 900,000 that is in the line item for the old county courthouse, you're talking about reducing that by 250?
No, the line item that you're talking about, it is from unbudgeted reserves. So that's still appropriately increased that amount because we were counting on the loan proceeds, the supplement as well with the CDDG. The total estimated cost on that historic county courthouse is over $2 million. So base one is the 88 compliance, which is about 750,000. Base two is about another 750,000 to 900,000. So that's where that line item was where it was.
So it's enough to, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. And so unbudgeted reserves, but so you have unbudgeted reserves that are being that are being actually reserved for?
Yeah, they're committed. I guess you could say, yeah. And that's basically the recommendation of DFA. I mean, if you don't commit them, they start to hide them as their own. The state tends to look at our reserves and think a thousand ways to spend them. So we have committed our reserves accordingly. We know we have the means. We know we have more means than reserves. So we have committed in that sense.
And then we're hoping for the CDBG and that would get us through our first two phases?
Yes.
Up the old courthouse.
Up the old courthouse, yes.
And?
That money can only be used to talk about.
Well, of course, the CDBG money, if we're awarded that, then it's, then it absolutely has to be used. But you're planning on the 900 still in reserves. And so in next spring, we're going to be looking at beginning the work and we hopefully will have funding for two-thirds of it. The 200 and, or the 500,000 that we originally talked about for the old courthouse, now you want to take 250 of that for the YAG Center and add to the 250 they already have. Where is that loan in the budget? I know it's paid for from lodgers' tax. So I guess it's not in general fund, it's separate.
It's its own independent fund. We find it only with the debt service fund. It's called lodgers'.
Right.
Yes, yeah, lodger's fund.
So over the next couple of years, what are you guessing you're going to have to ask for in addition to the 900 that you've already established from our 9 million reserves, more or less?
That's a question that I'll have to answer. We have an actual contractor on staff and on contract to tell us the actual cost from architectural design to what they actually know it's going to pay to do it, to put the design base. So I would anticipate roughly 200 to 500,000.
That's, that's what I was getting at. I knew you didn't know for sure at this point. All right. Further discussion?
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would like to see a timeline on the YAG building. And if I understand correctly, once you get the extension, we have another four years to spend that money?
It depends on what we ask for. I don't think they'll give us another four years. We need to have a plan of action. We need to give them the timeline as well. They're interested in that. You guys are so pumped at these decisions. And we can put the RFP back out, try and award a contract, and that contractor will give us that timeframe within. I would hope it's not four years.
Let's, let's not.
Let's say a year is all the way what we're asking for. We could probably talk about a year expansion max so that we can give them until the end of next summer to compete every. But I think I would like to extend it much sooner than that.
And who's going to be preparing the action plan?
That would be in conjunction with a contractor that we would hopefully hire and put out an RFP.
All right. Thank you.
Now we'll talk about the RFP. We know the position's already stated or something since we have to approve it after the committee makes your recommendations. We discussed that in the meeting.
Further discussion, or call again?
Commissioner Ramon?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramon?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenar?
Yes.
Commissioner Gallegos?
Yeah.
All right.
Commissioner, Gallegos?
Here.
Commissioner Ramon.
Yes.
You're robbing Peter to pay fall, pay fall back with Peter. All money is approved.
Thank you.
Ultimately, the goal is to complete a project.
All right.
Thank you.
Did you get that footage?
I kind of threw a couple at you.
I have a meeting in discussion regarding the closure of Tri County.
So commissioners, you probably heard through the news and all of the different discussions, Tri County, who is one of the county's core service providers, is shutting down their doors. We heard about this about two weeks ago originally. And since then, there's been quite more questions than answers up until the last couple days. There was a hope originally when this was announced that Tri County could make it through the end of August and be able to continue to pay their individuals, provide services. That no longer seems to be accurate or possible. We did have a meeting, the county did schedule a meeting last Monday to try and get our service providers together and start a discussion amongst the nonprofits already in existence around the community to see what, first of all, what is it that Tri County is providing? What is it they're no longer going to be able to provide and what other nonprofits are out there that can step up to do some of those services? The biggest name out there called is Vía de Sol. They're the only other provider in our area that is a core service agency. So that core service agency designation is pretty big because that allows them kind of a cart punch building. They have the ability to reimburse for multiple programs, multiple reimbursable expenses where some of the other local providers don't have that. So Vía de Sol is a pretty key player in all of this. The meeting we had last Monday became a little bigger than we had anticipated. Our goal was to, like I said, meet with the providers and some of the community members that could help us through a transition. And we had a lot of public show. There's about 100 people in the chambers. It was a good turnout and I think it was a good conversation that we had. We did unfortunately have to cut the meeting short as, I mean, somebody meaned we did have threats at the court next door right after the judgment from Judge Bacchus the day before. And those threats led us to shut, first lock down and shut down the complex that afternoon. So unfortunately, we did have to empty the room, which I'm grateful that everybody did listen. We got about 100 people out of here in a very quick time, about five minutes or so. So unfortunately, the conversation did not get complete. We didn't end that day and we ended with more questions than answers that day. Yesterday, Mr. Tammy Houdamier organized another meeting with just the providers here in the chambers. They met yesterday morning to talk about the same things, trying to identify what programs are up in the air. They also got some news yesterday morning that Dr. Rodney Gross had designed effective media yesterday morning from Tri County. Tri County is also now pursuing bankruptcy. I received some phone calls from one of the board members and one of their staff members who was the alibi with their attorneys yesterday, trying to get an idea of all of the liens that they have stacked up at Tri Counties. Our great staff in the clerk's office was helping me get a couple answers this morning still in regards to some of the IRS means that they think they may have. So I will update you on that and I know exactly what's out there. But we do have our own means for Tri County and property taxes. So just what we assess, they're delinquent on. And those that are already delinquent to the point, push them out to state. So the state now controls the delinquent bills for Tri County under property tax assessments. So Tri County is essentially done as we understand it. Besides Mr. Gross's resignation yesterday, there was also a meeting to tell employees that they will no longer be able to receive payment from Tri County. They aren't going to get paid. However, a lot of them, a lot of the employees should be thanked and appreciated for the fact they continue to serve, they continue to serve their clients. They're trying to have a smooth transition on behalf of the clients if possible, even while they're trying to figure out their financial situation. So I'm grateful to the employees of Tri County, the former employees of Tri County that just seem to have a heart for the people they're serving. Vía de Sol will likely be able to step up and provide a few of the key services that Tri County was providing. Things like the ACT program and PSR. I'm sorry, I don't know the ACT numbers as well as others, but those are two pretty key programs that are allowing some of the individuals with substance issues to have treatment provided to them. So those will hopefully be picked up by Vía de Sol. The director, Vía de Sol, was on the phone during, as part of that meeting, as a conference, and she was very helpful to answer a lot of questions. Besides Vía de Sol, Real Grand Treatment, Goldenwill are also stepping up, trying to provide intensive outpatient services. And all of the other local providers are doing what they can to be able to come in and provide some kind of continuity of service. So at this point, it doesn't seem quite as dire as it did about a week ago because of the great collaboration of the providers in our community. Things are looking a little bit better in the sense of continuation of care, but there is still the concerns of the former employees of Tri County. Obviously, they are probably in turmoil at knowing what their future holds. Vía de Sol may be able to come in and pick up some of those jobs and positions, but it probably won't be as quick of a transition as everyone would have liked when we were talking 60, 90 days or 30, 90 days as opposed to overnight, essentially. So we still have a lot of answers that need to be brought to our attention. We're going to go follow-up meetings with the one from last Monday on August 27th. Dr. Wingman Strumpf from the state will be here for that meeting. He was here last Friday and last Monday as well. At this point, we're very hopeful that our partners at the state that do have the ability to kind of step in and do kind of regulate the building, we hope that they do step in and help provide as smooth a transition as possible and that continuity of care that everyone's looking for. So my standard questions, I don't know if I have a lot of answers for you. It's been a moment. We've been trying to gather as much information as possible. I do want to thank Mr. Tammy Houdamier for her part in trying to organize the community to come together to talk about, you know, the problems that we're having and more importantly, talk about solutions to try and figure out how to afford it.
Mr. Chairman, what would be the chance of us assuming mortgage on that property that Tri County has and expanding services there? Just a thought. I don't know what that would involve, but if we need, or we need the space to advance our behavioral health program, maybe move out the engine, fund people to a bigger space. I'm just throwing that out to get your opinion.
So one of the things we did hear in our discussion last week before we had to cut it short was no new organization's going to be able to come in quickly and just take over. It does require licensing and prevention from the state and we talked about anywhere from a six-month to a one-year process for anybody to be able to come in. So I think that would remain true for the county. If the county had the appetite to try and create our very own CSA core service agency, we're looking at probably six-month to a year process to even get that done. So I think before we have the designation, it would be premature to talk about taking over that space. The, as I understand it, Mexico Finance Authority gave them the money to Tri County to purchase that building. So they essentially hope they don't. Mexico Finance Authority is not any typical bank. They are kind of the bond bank of the state, but they have different collateral, I guess you could say. So they also have the ability to handle foreclosure. It's not called foreclosure, they'll call it receivership. But they also have the ability to handle that differently. So I think if there was a provider that was able to step up and that provider needed the space, it would be probably more beneficial to work with that provider directly with NMFA. And I would be happy if the county was able to work and help facilitate those conversations. But I do think that ultimately, whoever ends up in that building for the long term, if the need is there, would probably be better served working with NMFA directly. NMFA would be better served to find somebody that can come in and take over the payments instead of having to put it into the expensive receivership process. So I don't know if I answered your question directly, but I don't think at this time the county has an appetite for the space.
Well, I think a lot of good is coming out of this. I ran into someone in the hallway who was getting their business license because they want to be a counselor. And so I think you're seeing a lot of people who care stepping up and Vía de Sol will absorb some of Tri County's employees in addition to taking children and adults who need medication management. So that authority was given to them by the behavioral health services to step up, absorb. And I don't know, it'd be nice at this next meeting to find out how many will be, how many employees would be absorbed by Vía de Sol and then how many are out of a job.
So before the meeting, I had probably charged clerk's office and asked if they could help me get an idea of all of the tax means against Tri County at the request of the Tri County Board. And that's what I was handed just a few minutes ago. So I'm grateful to the, to the hard work in that office. But just very quick math, it's over 700,000 dollars in tax means. IRS, Mexico Workforce Solutions. So that could be a big reason why all of this had, came to a head. When you can't get off a wonder dance that large, you're not going to be able to provide the services that you should be able to provide for the most median populations.
How does Workforce Solutions fit into that?
I believe they would be the provider. I don't know for sure, but I think Workforce Solutions has other options like workers' comp and things like that. So I don't know for sure.
You're talking about mine, right?
Yeah.
That's how it works.
Yeah. So that was my update. I know that there's probably still a lot more questions out there. We're continuing to pursue our answers and at the county level, we understand the importance of having that continuity of care. Things have gone pretty well in terms of our relationships with, even with Tri County. In the end, we're working well with them at the county level. And so we are very hopeful that things can be handed off, things can be absorbed, and we can get back to providing the best of the services with no matter which agencies end up stepping in and doing that. And like I said, the meeting next week is on August 27th here in the chambers. I believe we set the date, the time for 1:30. So if the commissioner wanted to come to let me know, so I can make sure to notice quorum if there's going to be a quorum of it. But basically, it's just to finish our conversation that started last Monday. Hopefully have some better news from the state. That's really my hope is that the state comes and really could, they can help one way or another.
Okay. Should we move on to our seat? Okay. And that will be discussion, consideration, and decision regarding the request from UNM House for a commitment on the Philabaco Building for the Early Childhood Development Center.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I brought this up once upon a time when we had been approached by UNM House for, to house the Early Childhood Development Center. They had been in talks with Towne House and they were going to, Towne House had offered them a temporary space for about two years up near Civic Plaza. And they were hoping that we would be able to commit the Philabaco Center for a long haul. They hadn't brought it back until this point, but now UNM has a request from the funders. They have private donors that are willing to give money, but they want to make sure that there is a place for us to house this early childhood development program. And so I am asking for a formal commitment of the Philabaco Center. Because UNM House is another public entity, we would be a government-to-government relationship. So we don't necessarily need to put out an RFP. We don't necessarily need to even get fair market value because of the government-to-government. There has been talk about consideration. And so that isn't what we're asking, I'm asking for today, that there's an agreement that will come back before the board formally approve any kind of agreement of these. At this time, I'm just asking for a commitment of the space so that I can pass that out to UNM so they can then allow their funders to know that they have a future opportunity at that building.
I personally think that would be an ideal spot for detox and I'm not.
So Mr. Chairman, the building is in need of a lot of work?
Actually, a lot of work has already been done. So it was in need of a lot of work when we received it from the Towne House. Mr. Mike Trujillo had applied and was granted quite a few capital off the grants and geoband lines to make some major improvements. Which we've done, we improved the roof, we improved the HVAC, and made improvements in the kitchen area. So the building we have now is certainly a much better building than the one we took over. However, it's just, it's not a long-term solution for our seniors. That's why we are building the senior building. But the building itself is still viable.
So tell us a little bit about the Early Childhood Development Program.
So what I know about the Early Childhood Development Program is there's one already existing at the Claver Campus, the South Campus. It's been in existence for a while now and it's actually been highly regarded. They've won awards, they're credited. And I understand that the young, the children that come out of it are very much prepared for school. So it isn't, it's not just a preschool. It's an Early Childhood Development Center. So they're very proud of that designation as opposed to a preschool or a pre-K or a head start. The request from the donors because of the success of the program at the Claver Campus was to do a second program.
A satellite?
A satellite or a whole under, another program to allow for more participation. They've maxed out the ability to house a number of kids out there at the Claver Campus. So originally, the request was to have it somewhere downtown, close to the population so that our working-class folks in town can take advantage of the childhood development center as well. When they started their conversations with the town... When they started their conversations with the town, the town only had a temporary space. They did not want to commit anything beyond two years because they had other plans for their space. So the mayor at that time came to me with a request for the Philo Alto Center and whether that would be something that would be viable. So we had talked about it, just thrown around the idea. Now that we're actually moving along senior building and we can see completion in sight, we would end up vacating that building in probably about a year. And so UNM is coming back for a hard commitment so that they can have, their donors understand that they have a place.
Mr. Chairman, a couple more questions. What would be the cost to the counties in this transaction then? Are we planning to deed the property to UNM or just some sort of release agreement?
It's a lease, as I'm aware, it would only be a lease. They have not, they have not asked us to deed the property. So I would not deed them the property if we could help them with this release.
And Mr. Chairman, your thoughts on it were?
About being able to do a detox center? Got a kitchen already, some partitions and an eight bed.
And so who would do that?
Whoever, I mean, if we got into a RFP with a provider, we've talked about, we don't have a place for it, we've got interest. To me, it's right next to Insurance Park, it's not in a neighborhood like what is the argument against the building up on Wymer. That's why most people that live there don't want it in their neighborhood. I mean, we're, this is not a place where it's going to pose any threat to. Yeah, I'm trying to think what the term. There's not a neighborhood where it would be an influence, a negative influence on. And to me, the conversion of that and the size, it's similar size to the building that's up on Wymer, I believe. They're going to take some construction to make bedrooms.
And so the building on Wymer, do we own that or is?
No, the town doesn't. We get repairs, they're going to give it to us and they reneged on.
So would we vacate that building then? What sort of a contract do we have on the building, on the detox?
This is, oh, that one we have none, none. This one is our building.
So if the detox center went to this one and vacated the existing?
Yeah, there's nothing up and down, so making buildings that we have money able to fix for the town.
Would that be in the house?
You know, there's been requests and it would potentially be able to house a detox, it's not our building. And so any attempts at me with the town to ask about that idea that really did shop out.
To kind of, he's saying put the Early Childhood Development thing up in that?
Right. That's an idea? I guess I could approach the town on that idea. Like I said, I thought they're very welcoming to the idea of another detox there, but maybe a Early Childhood Development Center might make sense in that neighborhood.
But I really supported that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, we can do something about it.
Yeah, this is a great program, I know the people that are involved in it and I want it to succeed and I want it to expand. We're in great need of a detox center and that's a perfect neighborhood for it. Just my thought about that to our chairman.
I just wanted to say, I think this request is a little premature. I don't see anybody here for being around to answer our questions. If it's early learning, then that would mean our county employees not be able to put their kids into daycare. That's kind of what I thought originally about that, that a certain amount would go for daycare for kids, our kids, families who have kids and need the daycare, but.
Your daughter's too old, she doesn't need that.
But I do agree that the rumors that the neighbors don't want it, I'd like to know who, I know a neighbor up there who wouldn't mind at all. So some of these claims made by the town that the neighbors don't want it, well, that's fine and if they're not letting us pay that building, then it makes sense for us to do something with this center here.
Commissioner Ronald.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I kind of agree with Commissioner Ronald in that one. So that, I mean, mayor's already, you know, the UNM has already approached the mayor about early childhood and then he's come to you about our building here. So obviously, he doesn't have in his playbook at the moment a plan to, for that building to be early childhood. I don't know what the plan is for that, but you know, if the detox center is run properly, it's not a danger to the neighborhood. So is there, is there quite a bit of demand still for this Early Childhood Development in addition to what they have with Claver?
I believe so. Yeah, I think, and kind of like Commissioner Ronald mentioned, they give top a lot the ability to have the position, the openings specific to county employees. It's not a daycare, so that was never really the conversation, but it is a full day travel home center, so it potentially still have a benefit to us.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going the way, excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm going the way, you know, we definitely need both as Chairman stated and, but hopefully, you know, as Commissioner Romero stated, you know, we need somebody to run the detox. So hopefully, there's something that works. I'm not completely convinced that the town council couldn't be prepared to use that building for detox. If there is a decent proposal to run it and it was an operation that they felt like would have some controls, I think it's still a possibility that that could be used for detox. And what do you want a commitment by?
Well, I was hoping to be able to give UNM that commitment as they were requesting, but after the conversation here, I understand that there's probably somewhere I'm hoping I could do. I mean, so today, we can find out if they didn't commit that, I understand that at this point. So let me go back to UNM, explain to them what's ideas and concerns and see if we can find a hybrid of some sort or see if we can start looking for options before we commit.
It could work great, I mean, Early Childhood Development could work great back there. I don't want to foreclose that possibility.
No, it needs to happen and it needs to happen somewhere, but.
We got, we need the detox too, so maybe, maybe UNM could make a presentation to us and we could get a little more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
So I got Commissioner Romero now for the advice, Chair Gayles. So Mr. Chairman, I would currently like to see a possibly a very small, a special meeting that could take place between UNM, County and the Taunton Taos so that we can further expand in this dialogue. I'd like for the idea of what Commissioner, Chairman, and what was suggesting about opening the detox center to the Ophiloto, it's in a great area, very simple to those, those folks that need that sort of assistance. You know, the sheriff's, the detention, the courts, everything, it's all within reach, it would be very accessible to them. And then creating the youth program on Wymer. So I would really like to see a joint meeting with the town to discuss that and other matters that we may have, we haven't had a joint meeting with them.
And is it accountable to them?
It is.
Vice Chair Gayles.
Well, I just want to, I think through the support of having a very meaningful, very healthy, he's above recognition. Mr. Cortova, can you, visiting, how many jobs will the Early Childhood Development Program, you know, develop right away?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gayles, I don't know that answer correctly. I believe I heard three jobs in a minimum, but there's not a whole lot of jobs in that kind of program, but I can go check and get back to you.
Well, I would hope that we would have a decision other than the direction. Could you, would we chat to you, to, regarding, I mean, because I agree that, you know, the perfect fit, the timing is probably the bigger issue and knowing what the commitment in the Taunton Taos is going to be, depending on what they're expecting, I guess it would truly concern the community.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it, Mr. Chief Director.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I just want to say that the county, we have a perfect ability to help everybody and we have the means, we have the type of county government and force out that we can do these things. I just feel that it would be something that's very important. Those needs arise and we're able to report to you very sensibly.
It's sad to me that the Taos news reporter left.
It's a special.
It's a general, it's part of the course. Okay, so I guess we gave you not what you were looking for here maybe, but I just, I've been looking at that and thinking, I just see the need of detox as a probably priority one, this Tri-County happening at the same time. Yeah.
Thank you, I do appreciate your action and I will pursue any ideas and anything I appreciate getting, especially me for this time, I do that, so I can, how about you guys?
Okay, so we'll move on to item D, discussion, consideration and decision regarding Taos County opting into the Pilt. This is a lawsuit that was left out under payment class action lawsuit.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I've talked to you about this a few times. We have received correspondence from NACO, from NOC. Mr. Audio has reviewed all of the documentation and we have a deadline of at least September fourteenth to actually officially opt in. So the county is poised to receive roughly, well, the amount that was underpaid, it's been calculated to be about sixty-six thousand dollars move over that. We're looking at probably a third of that going to attorneys for the class action lawsuit, but I still think it's within our best interest to go ahead and opt in. That's my recommendation, my opinion. I think that it's, we're probably the second county that will benefit as much as everyone else, where by second in line has the most benefit from this class action lawsuit on Pilt. I think only lead county had more benefit than us when we needed it. But we could definitely use sixty thousand dollars that we weren't anticipating. So I would like a formal decision from the board as to whether or not you would like me to opt in to that lawsuit.
So Mr. Chairman, the lawsuit is against who?
It's against the US government. I believe it's Kane County out of Ohio, I believe, or, no, actually, I think it was Utah, Kane County, they started all of this. They pursued it as an underpayment, they felt that they were shorted. The judge heard their argument and decided to allow it to be a class action. And I guess what's unique about this is typically with a class action, you opt out, this is one where they're asking us to officially opt in instead of opting out of it. So we're not automatically in the class action, we have to opt in to them. And so that's just the formality that I wanted the board to make a decision on, giving me that direction.
So Mr. Chairman, I don't believe we had this as an official discussion at the Association of Counties. Any ideas how other counties in the state of New Mexico are reacting to this?
There has been email going around, the manager's affiliate and the attorney's affiliate, for the most part, most of the counties are going to let opt in. There's a few that are not, they're not going to receive much. I think Roosevelt County has a thousand dollars on the table and they're deciding to opt out. They're not going to go after that thousand dollars you divided by a third to get six hundred bucks and they don't, they didn't see the value, but most of the other counties have decided to opt in. Lead county definitely is one higher than us and then I think our neighbors in our county are opting in, so. I don't really see a reason not to opt in, that's why my recommendation is to go ahead and opt in, but I wanted the board to make that decision.
Pleasure, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and set a motion then that we move to opt in to the Pilt. What is the class action lawsuit?
Second.
Okay, question is second to opt in to the Pilt, under payment class action lawsuit. Further discussion. For Calloway.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackham?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gayles.
Commissioner Gayles?
Yes.
Chairman Blackham?
Yes.
Item E is updated to the County Commission on various items affecting Taos County.
So Commissioners, a few meetings back, a young lady came and provided a proposal at a flea market in our complex parking lot. He did ask me to follow up with her on the proposal and so I have said, I've done it a couple of times, and so I wanted to update the board on where we're at at this point. Unlike proposals that we had in the past, this one was only asking for a portion of our parking lot and all that thing. And so the big concern that I always had was making sure we had an unimpeded access to the jail, which this plan proposal does allow for. I also have concerns about porta potty or public restrooms in our complex. This plan does request a porta potty on whatever the vendor is willing to pay for a little barrier, a fence to cover that up and work with Mr. Shifrost, our facilities director, right placement of that. And then another concern of mine obviously is to make sure we had enough parking per display area and so that has been addressed as well. We definitely have enough parking from the unused area to meet the demands of the requested space, which is basically just the back portion underneath the trees. So they're basically going to take that little parking bank, all the trees and then the two banks on the other side of parking and then the rest would be available for actual parking. I did also ask this really the vendor to talk to both Superstate and Wendy's, just that they know that she's proposing this and to get their thoughts and make sure that they were comfortable with it, she's done that and both businesses were glad that she had talked to them about it. So at this point, she's pretty much met all of my requirements and Owen, insurance, she's been able to find insurance, the required insurance allowance. So it's, Owen, there's also, she's offered to pay more than the previous applicant or requested. So at this point, I just wanted to inform the board that I don't know if there's any reason to deny this flea market proposal in this very defining area of our complex. It would be on Saturdays from nine to one is the request and there was an offer of seventy-five dollars a day for that space. She's also offered to provide security on their own dining. They will be paying for the porta potty, all expenses associated with it will be covered by the marketing. So I wanted to bring that to the board and listen to any concerns, questions that you might have or anything you might expect and ask the vendor if I had a thought or any.
Mr. Chairman, my thought would be if she will allow a few farmers in addition to flea market, because there may be a few farmers that would like to have a different location.
Part of her proposal was to allow basically any kind of vendor and so she does have that as part of the proposal. She does not want to compete directly with the farmer's market, however, she mentioned the same thing, that there has been farmers that have reached out to her. What we can't allow right in front of it is the ability to sell pre-baked goods and she is aware of that and she's trying to pursue that with the state to see what would be required to be able to do that. But I think that is part of the plan is to allow not just resale of goods, but through vegetables potentially.
How did you, Mr. Chairman, how did you come up on the seventy-five dollar a day for?
When we did our fair market value assessments of all our community centers, we got a rough idea of cost per foot, so we took a look at that and then I have talked to a real estate friend who said there's a percentage of porta potty out. So really, it came out to fifty to a hundred dollars would be the average.
Four hours, four out?
Yeah, four out, well, actually, four all day. She made the offer of seventy-five dollars, the previous applicant had offered fifty. And so, I mean, when you're trying to determine fair market value, a lot of times the offers that are out there on the table, that's really what you would use to determine that. So the offer of seventy-five tied with the previous offer of fifty. Seems to fall in different, around. And like I said, to the previous request for the entire market up for fifty dollars a day, this is just. this is just a portion of it for sure.
So you don't, we can't make a decision on this now that you?
Yeah, as I understood it, this is an administrative decision that I can make, but I wanted to inform the board that at this point, unless you have something else for me to question, it's hard for me to deny, she's made all of my requirements, she's made all of the requests. And like I said, it's not the full amount of parking lot, it's a defined area that I think we can accommodate.
I like Commissioner O'Donnell's idea of her trying to include also potential booths that sell produce. If that would be part of the requirement to her, that would be really good.
She wants to start and go through October or?
I believe so. She was hoping, it's obviously too late to get started this Saturday, but her proposal was to start this Saturday and then we're both threatening the end of October. And so the reason I wanted the board to be aware of it too is if I do give her the decision, she can start advertising, see that advertising. It is a bit of a trial run, she's aware of that as well. I didn't promise anything beyond this defined time period as well, because I do think it's worth us giving it a shot, seeing it, it's even viable for her, because she did limit the size of booths and may not bring in the revenue that she was anticipating or to make. So it's an opportunity for both sides to see if it's a viable market. There's no questions about that. I also have received a request from Regina Perez Baron, who was formerly with Tri-County. She wants to be able to continue to provide some of the services she was providing under the umbrella of Tri-County and she's been working with, I think it's Tuni Casa de Norte that has a van, a mobile van. She has requested to park that van at a county property, the original request was here at the complex. After some discussion with her, I threw out a few other options. And Mon Sancho's Park really got her attention, she thinks that that would be a better option for the van. It's a little more discreet, it's a bigger parking area and she would be doing this on Friday afternoons. So anytime during the week, it's hard to do anything in our complex parking lot. You have, as you guys realize the last few weeks, depending on the media, there's not always enough parking in the first place for our services. So the request is for a short term, it would probably be no more than a month. And she was more than happy to use the Mon Sancho's Park. I talked to Mr. Frost, he's identified an area for her to park the van. And I feel like we're pretty much done with the softball season, we're getting ready to install the concession bathrooms over there. So the area he determined for the van would be away from that construction area. So in the short term, it seems like an opportunity to continue to provide the services to those people that desperately need them with the hope of them. So I just wanted to let the board know that most likely we'll be moving forward with that as well. That one will have to have a set time, because I'm not going to ask for consideration at this time, even though they are a nonprofit, I feel it's very limited. It's providing a service that otherwise the county potentially could provide. And Mr. O'Donnell used to be very good about explaining that that was an option for us. If it's a service that the county could otherwise potentially provide, then we would have the ability to allow that short-term use without consideration. So it would be very short-term until they had a place set up for me. If there's no questions about that. I'll move on to some good news, our budget was approved. It was a very quick turnaround, mostly because we had very few changes from the preliminary and because we were one of the test counties on the LGDMS software. And so I wanted to congratulate Ms. Martinez and the finance department for another great budget that was very quickly approved and turned around, so we're now operating under our final budget. On that note, I've had some inquiries from Commissioners as well as other people about the need for a lobbyist issue, whether the county is going to need to pursue a lobbyist. It was not part of the budget that was approved. However, I do understand the need for a 60-day session to potentially ask somebody to help us. So what I wanted to understand is I'm going to be looking, as we get into the end of the first quarter, for potential revenue to see what we can come up with and then I would do an RFP. I'd certainly put out an RFP to try and find out who else there is, has the appetite to maybe work as a county lobbyist. I don't think we need as much help as we have in the past per se, but a 60-day session, because it would be valuable to have somebody with our interests on the ground all the time. I felt like last year was a good opportunity for me to get out there and do my best. And I felt like I did my best and we will get some money for the county. But it is probably a full-time job for those 30 to 60 days. And so I am just kind of giving the board where we're at with that, where we stand with that. We did not have the money in the budget, so I can't just put the RFP out yet. But if we can find the money, it will be done with an RFP process.
And we'll have a new governor.
And we'll have a new governor. And if those two lawsuits don't take up all of the capital money, there's going to be a lot of money available out there. And plus, I just feel we need it for the protection, if we don't have someone there defending us, we have multiple people talking against us and that's kind of.
So we're looking at an individual that's not going to be representing the schools, the town, the county all at the same time, correct? We're just looking at a lobbyist that's going to represent Taus County 200% and that's it?
If that's the request of the board, I haven't predetermined that yet. Like I said, I put out the RFP and see what kind of responses we got, what kind of proposals we have. I hadn't thought about eliminating someone just because they represent someone else. It's the same people in town.
And in the past, I've seen where it's become a conflict. Because we hire a lobbyist for 20, 30, 40, 50,000 dollars and you go to the legislature, not only are they representing Taus County, but they're representing everyone in the neighborhood, not to mention Moana and other towns as well. So it would be really nice to see someone that represents just Taus County.
I understand. As the chairman mentioned, it's also valuable to kind of play defense. A few years back, even with a lobbyist, we still lost the appropriation that the counties, they got taken from us and given to someone else, kind of the scenario you mentioned, even with a lobbyist on staff. So we are looking for someone else that can help us play defense if we need to and just defend what we already have. Okay. And at this point, I'm going to ask Mr. Pacheco to help him give a little bit of an update on this porto bus bridge. We have poured the decking, as I understand, the cement is laid down there tomorrow. The plan is to do the approaches. So I'll let him kind of elaborate on that.
Good morning again. The decking was poured last week. Today, they are going to do a crush test on some specimens that were taken from the batches of cement that was poured last week. It should reach the 4,000 PSI today. If not, then they have a 14-day test and a 21-day test. It's a 4,000 PSI test today, that's it for the testing. The bridge is set, it's cured. Tomorrow, the plan is to pour the approaches.
Yeah. Cross every finger and dot every.
Tomorrow, the plan is to pour the approaches. WAH and the contractor have agreed on a different type of pouring procedure. The engineer approved it, so it's good to go. I talked to the contractor, he's good with it, he's happy with what's happening now. September 3rd is the cutoff date, so hopefully.
So how much of the next extension was going to be?
September 3rd was the drop date.
I thought it was before the beginning of the school year.
Yeah, I think it was that. The contractor stated August 9th and so that obviously is coming along. So at this point, yes, we allowed him to take till September 3rd. Then we are assessing the liquidated damages per day. At the end of the project, I did commit to sit down with the contractor and allow him to make a case for some days that he feels he may have an argument for. But at this time, it's $750 a day since the 9th. And so we are going to assess that and upon completion, then we will get if there's anything that we can allow for.
I feel the engineers are responsible.
And, I mean, yeah, the engineer definitely had a part in this. The contractor, it was their first real bridge that they had done, so at that, I think they overcame most of those obstacles as well. And then the county hadn't really done a bridge in any of our tenure. So we also have learned a lot about the process. And maybe we had a very tight frame, the tie frame might have been a little tight in the first place. We were really trying to coincide with summer school break and we might have needed another week or two, but we learned a lot from that and the contractor did agree to the tie frame and did sign the contract, so.
One of the issues is there was a lot more salt that had been absorbed into the metal than was anticipated. Was that a 90% number? They allowed only seven, but after the treatment that the contractor did, it was at 10%.
So we're reusing some of the old bridge?
Yes, that's how the engineer designed it.
So that was enough there on the porto bus. Just a couple more things and then I'll let you guys. It's a long morning. I had a couple of community center meetings, I met the Amalia Community Center folks last Friday up in Amalia. They are very excited about the building. It's nearly complete, as I mentioned earlier, all that's left is flooring. We fixed all the cracks and seen that floor and our facilities crew is actually up there today to look at putting an epoxy down and that will be the end. So the goal is to have an open house sometime after the 1st of September up in Amalia. The fire department has already moved into their space and the chief already has a key to that. And so after the tours are done, we will likely be getting it to the president of the association just to be able to help us open and close, but the county will be in control. We will continue to operate it and to do our best to help that community get it going and get things scheduled and stuff. But obviously, with it being so far away, we do need some help with opening and closing the building. So I felt like that was a pretty good meeting, even though as grateful as they are to the county, there's still a little bit of doubt after 20 years and not completely convinced that we're going to have that grand opening. So we really wanted, wow, we gave them that grand opening if they were waiting 20 years for it. So I also met last week with the Penasco Community Association. I stopped them early home for one of their meetings. For the most part, they're pretty grateful for the work that the county's done. They've done a lot of improvements to the building, there's still little things. One of the big initiatives that we are trying to take around the county and all our buildings is to put video cameras and to have some surveillance for security as well as viability. And so that was another request of Penasco and Amalia. On Amalia, unfortunately, over the last week or so, I've had a lot of break-ins. So we're looking at fast-tracking the cameras at the community center and the senior center so that we can have that safety for our assets up there. So we're going to continue to try and meet with our community groups a little at a time. Mr. Frost, being with us now a few months, has gotten me the opportunity to get out to a lot of the community centers about everything. He hasn't been to every single building yet either. What we're up in Amalia, we took a little ride up to Montello. He didn't even know we had a Montello substation for our fire district, so he was able to see that, found that. And so there's also an initiative to improve the Quetzal Public Works building. We've known for a long time that there's a major deficiencies over there, so we're moving forward in fixing a lot of those problems up there and improving the insulation and upgrading that building, so.
Mr. Chairman, did you find out when Mr. Frost could get to the flooring in Penasco?
At the community center?
Yeah, the buffing, no, at the community center, the buffing, the waxing, the removing the spots.
I don't have a date for that, but he is aware of the issue, so I'll get with him and ask him to give me a time and he'll be scheduling. The facilities crew last week were in Penasco fixing the fire station because they had major cedric problems, a lot of roots and cedric lines, kind of like a problem we had in Oaxaca, they were about to facilities was able to cure. So I'm grateful for their work to save us a lot of money and help to improve the outcome of some of these buildings, so I would thank them for that. I think that's all I have for today, just a couple of things. Is there any questions?
All right, thank you. Moving on, item 13A is discussion consideration of decision regarding the approval of Taus County to submit a project feasibility form for a transportation alternative program planning grant for handicapped accessibility from the rest area to the Grand de Norte National Monument. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet, you have all the documents. This would comprise the PIF form that we would give, it is a preliminary. They've changed their method of submission is the first application is not as intensive so that governments do not spend the time on a detailed application. So what you have is what would be submitted and the feds pay 5.5%. County matches it with 14.5. In going to the NPR/TPO meetings, this was brought up. I think Taus County, this would be the first time we have applied for this kind of funding. In hearing past presentations by Los Alamos and Santa Fe, there's a lot of money in this TAP program. I think Los Alamos got a couple million. Santa Fe has gotten the same amount in the past. So this is not a substantial amount, it would be a 300-foot walkway, 10-foot wide, that would accommodate our handicapped people, both tourists and our seniors and those who are unable to walk down the rocky slope to get to the bridge. And this is a project that the highway department seemed interested in and as you know, they don't have the kind of money to do those kind of improvements. So this is a perfect fit to be able to work with the highway department to get this funding done.
I was unaware this was county property.
There are agreements in place that you can do these programs on highway department land. I think the Blue Bus did their new handicap bus route right on the highway. And it is a partnership, an MOU would, if we made the second round, an MOU would be in place. So these are projects that are allowable under the Department of Transportation.
State federal lands.
Yes, that's right, but it still is a project that we can partner with DOT to do that.
And I just think that's a very high match, usually matches are fighting for 10%, 14% and 15%.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, you talked about federal lands, is it on the reservation side?
No, it's not in the rest area. It is actually owned by the BLM, but they leased it to DOT and they are charged with managing that area. And this kind of TAP program goes on all over with federal lands, highway department lands, where partnerships are formed. And from what I've seen at the bridge with, there's no handicapped accessibility. In the past, Judge Shannon has had to lift people in wheelchairs onto the bridge. This would allow many of our elderly and handicapped people to access the bridge safely. So this is a safety issue, it benefits our tourism industry. So I would ask the board to support this project, it would not take place until next fiscal year.
I will not support anything that puts people on that bridge. Commissioner Blackham.
Thanks. So, yeah, it's a pathway for everybody to walk right there.
That's right.
Sometimes when people visit, we'll go out there. I know that Chairman's not a big fan, but it is sort of an amazing thing. I hope that they're able to figure out something to help prevent suicides. So this is federal money and the 14% match would be 30 grand?
Yes, yes.
The rest couldn't pull it up. And who's providing the, oh, thank you. And who's providing the, oh, thank you. A couple hundred thousand dollars from the feds. And I think we do, that it is a big tourist attraction, and it's kind of funky out there. I think it would be nice to have that app, and so I would support it.
If you could put up the justification, please? It just kind of talks about the location and what it would do. And you see a picture of the current walkway that you can't take a wheelchair down. Then you've got the design, which would have landing ramps to meet the ADA, built out of concrete and steel.
Can you read it there, just to kind of, if you can explain to us?
So this three-hundred-foot walkway would meet ADA requirements. Also would help people who, maybe they're a little older or they just had an operation, they can't get to the bridge, they can walk down this. It has landing ramps to meet the ADA requirements of a certain grade. And we have an architectural rendering of kind of what it would be made out of. Easy to maintain, a little painting, maybe light replacements.
So the vendors used to be in this area or across from it?
Vendors are in the rest area. The vendors used to be, that's kind of hard to say. See this area here, the vacant spot, yeah, right in there.
Those three cars are, that's where the vendors used to be?
And then along the highway on the other side.
So you put this together? Is this your initiative, Commissioner McDonald?
Yeah, because after the last NPR/TPO meeting, it was pointed out that Taos County was not submitting or was anyone else. And in discussion with the highway department, they said this would be an allowable project.
With the state highway department?
Yes.
And so, but it was your suggestion, and they said this would be allowable?
Yes.
How about the town, would the town split it with us?
I don't know. We have enough time to see, I mean...
They should, they're big on tourism, and this is, in some sense, a tourist improvement in many ways, I think. It's so funky out there now, people come and... Anyway, I appreciate the effort, I support it. I would absolutely like to hear the town split that bridge. Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Oh, I think we would motion...
Pleasure of the permission.
I would make a motion that we make the PIF form, we apply to DOT for the first round of applications to create an ADA-compliant walkway from the rest area to the bridge.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman. And I would also like to see in that token meeting with the town, that this be on the agenda.
Here we have a motion, a second, to submit the project feasibility form to Transportation Alternative Program Planning Grant for Handicap Accessibility in the rest area of Rio Grande de Norte National Monument. Third possible.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenroth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gairos?
Commissioner Gairos?
Chair Valverde?
No.
We got to yell.
Thank you very much.
You're hit.
Yeah, we got it, thank you.
My MBE is new business to be considered at a future commission meeting.
Mr. Chairman, still wondering about the old tower on National Guard. If there's anything you want to add, it might be...
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I already have not heard you update on that. I will ask him to be prepared by September fourth for that. I know he may be looking at these, we've given him a lot of documents, so... He's moved along, right? But I had a document for the same time, updating, so...
Item C, Commissioner Announce this. Mark, I just got to figure out how to get you this proclamation, because you've got to sign it. And the one that we'll be presenting, that's the only right to remind you of that. Do I have the, I have it here?
Okay. I can just apply law warning or...
Okay, I'll leave it with an EISA.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, that's the only thing I have. Okay, item fourteen. Taos County Board of Commissioners may convene in closed session. Item A is a discussion regarding Pauline Rivera et al. versus the Taos County Board of Commissioners of, and Taos County et al., case number D eight twenty CB two thousand thirteen dash zero zero one one seven. This may be discussed in executive session under the exemption ten dash fifteen dash one H seven, which allows discussion of pending or threatened litigation. I would like a motion from the commissioners to go into closed session. Anticipate this being about a five-hour discussion.
Is Mr. Chairman to be present?
Available if need, but probably...
And if it remains in here?
Yes.
Move that we go into executive sessions, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Third possible.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald? Yes. Commissioner Blankenroth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gairos?
Yeah.
Chairman Farrow?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, motion from the commissioners to come back to open session.
Salute.
Third possible.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenroth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gairos?
Commissioner Gairos?
Chairman Farrow?
Yes.
Okay, as for report, the item discussed was only regarding the Pauline Rivera et al. versus Taos County Board of Commissioners on the case listed on the agenda topic. No other items were discussed.
Motion to approve the board? I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, a second, third possible.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald? Yes. Commissioner Blankenroth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gairos? Chairman Farrow?
Yes. Item fifteen is a discussion regarding Pauline. Actually, it's the same, same word. So at the next meeting, we will have to make a motion to, regarding what was discussed in executive sessions. It will be an open, in open meeting. Next item on the agenda is item sixteen.
Salute, Mr. Chairman.
With that, thank you to everyone in the meeting here today, our clerk of staff, the executive staff, and everyone for making this work. Thank you, Francis, for always being here. All favor of the chairman, say aye. Aye, pose, same sign. Thank you all.